I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please take the roll?
Here.
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 Councilmember Hornco.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Mayor Protonzary.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
Councilmember Dusted.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City assessor.
Here.
DPW supervisor.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. We have a lot on the agenda tonight and we do have changes to the agenda. So we do have a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
We have a motion to amend the agenda by Councilmember Hornco, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed. We are adding to the agenda under new business, non-motorized transportation committee, an applicant, Todd Miller of Sixborough-Menroe, Manistee. There's also changes to the notices, communications, and announcement to add a national day of prayer gathering at City Hall and consideration of an email scout resolution. Is there any discussion on changes to the agenda?
Mr. and Mrs. Nunn, can you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Dusted.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams. Oops. [laughter] Mayor Protonzary.
Yes.
Councilmember, it says Hayden, but we know it's Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornco.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Oh.
Mayor.
Here. Yes. Thank you. Tonight, we have two public hearings and a presentation. The first will be a presentation on the utility rate study by Andy Burnham from Burton and Associates.
Andy, please.
For the record, my name is Andrew Burnham with Burton and Associates. I go by Andy. And throughout the presentation this evening, there's going to be a fair amount of detailed information. I've tried to strike the balance between adequate information and too much detail. So please stop me if you have questions as I go through things. Before I get too much in depth in terms of the study itself, I just want to give you an overview of really where we are in the process and what we've done to date. We've completed our initial analysis. We've poured over a significant amount of data provided by your staff, spent several hours with your staff in detailed work sessions allocating costs line by line, whether it's fixed assets or operating budget line items, to ensure we had a proper understanding and allocation of the costs as part of the process. And ultimately developed our initial findings and recommendations, which I'll get into the basis of those and what those recommendations entail as part of tonight's presentation. But what we then did is presented the results of our analysis to stakeholders. That happened on the ninth, just a few days prior to this presentation tonight. We're also presenting our findings and analysis to you and to the public for your consideration and input to the process as well. And then ultimately, through, I think, tonight's discussion, we're looking for direction relative to next steps for potential implementation of all or portion of the recommendations and findings from the study. I think that's what your city manager would be looking for direction for as a result of tonight. So with that, I'd like to just first give a quick introduction about our firm for the benefit of not only yourself but the public. Burton and Associates really specializes in assisting local governments such as yourselves in addressing the multi-year financial planning and cost recovery needs. We've done about 1,000 different studies since the 1988 and the past 25 years for a variety of different issues. And the way we do things is a little bit different from most practitioners in that we specialize in using interactive financial planning and cost allocation models and a decision support process, just like we employ with your staff, to really go through and in an open forum, identify all the key issues, data points, assumptions, and analyze what those items are, discuss the issues, and have a clear understanding of what the consequences are of any potential decision alternative to really work towards consensus-driven solutions. And that's really what we're all about. While we conduct our services for communities in a number of different areas and services that they provide are really the bread and butter of our business and area of emphasis is in water resources. And we've actually co-authored manuals for the American Waterworks Association specifically designed to developing rates for smaller utility systems. In addition, we serve clients across the country in various states. I'm not going to go through the list here. It's not all-inclusive, but we certainly have a great breadth of knowledge that we've acquired from serving communities across the country in this regard that we offer as part of providing our services about accepted industry practices and utilizing those to reflect your unique circumstances. I've been your project manager throughout the conduct of the study. I've been doing this type of work for over 13 years. I've done over 500 studies. And I'm presently a member of the Rates and Charges Subcommittee of the American Waterworks Association. So I'm very active and very knowledgeable about all items related to water resources, rate-making, and cost allocation. So I'd be happy to entertain questions about those things as they come up tonight, in addition to the specifics of your study. Jim Bearman, who's with me in the audience, he's the vice president of our firm. He's been providing quality assurance and control as part of the project and been a technical advisor. Jim comes from an extensive utility rate-making background with Consumers Energy and he heads up our Michigan office. So we bring a great deal of knowledge and expertise specifically to your project, which I think is important given the complexity of your utility system for a community of your size. Before I get into the study itself and the process, I think it's important to understand really the goal of what these studies are trying to do, which is establish a sustainable rate structure. Rate structures really have to have that triple bottom-line balance of the three key components of sustainability. Really, first and foremost, they have to be socially sustainable, reflecting a fair and equitable distribution of the cost of service to your customers. And that's the first aspect of the study that we did was to understand your cost of service and how it should be apportioned to your users based upon their usage characteristics and how they benefit from the system. It also has to provide funds for ensuring environmental compliance. You've incurred a significant amount of costs associated with combined sewers and eliminating those as well as meeting other regulatory requirements. That's a key aspect that the rates have to be mindful of is maintaining regulatory requirements and funding the cost of that compliance. And really, the third and probably the largest attribute of sustainability that your rates have to be set up to address is related to economic parameters. Establishing a plan of rates and revenue generation that will satisfy your annual operating costs as well as managing and planning for your management of your assets in terms of not only the rehabilitation but also their future replacement. The ability to service any existing and new debt may be issued to fund certain capital improvement requirements. To maintain adequate financial policies relative to reserves and net income levels that are necessary to comply with the terms of your outstanding indebtedness. And also provide fiscal stability in terms of recognizing that you incur a substantial amount of fixed costs as part of operating the utility system that don't go away when demands are reduced during non-irrigation periods. The rate study process really has three phases, and I'm going to go through each of the phases with you in order. The first in your system was really to perform a detailed cost of service allocation. Given the complexity of your system, we really needed to start with this aspect as opposed to looking at the financial management plan to understand the dynamics and nature of your customers and your system. And as part of this process, we not only became familiar with your data, but as part of becoming familiar with your data and your customers, we identified the most appropriate industry practices to use for cost allocation and rate design and define logical classes of customer for your system based upon the size of your community and the knowledge that we acquired about your system. And we then distributed the cost of service to each of the identified customer classes based upon the accepted industry practice and defined customer classes that we identified. We then took the cost of service allocation analysis and overlaid against that a recommended rate structure. Once we knew how the cost should be apportioned to each of the customer classes, we then needed to develop the specific fee structure that would recover those costs from each class of customer. And we developed a rate structure that was mindful of several parameters relative to recovery of fixed costs, trying to provide that fiscal stability for some of the peaking costs that you incur you around regardless of what the amount of consumption is on the system, conformance to accepted industry practice as well as relevant legal precedent, administrative burden, also any existing agreements, as well as being mindful to the greatest extent possible while comporting with these other identified criteria of customer impacts, trying to moderate those as much as possible within the context of a new rate structure. Once we've identified the new rate structure, we then developed a multi-year financial management plan for the system that worked off of the current cost requirements that we have today, the identified capital improvement program for the system, projected customers, expenses, fund balances, debt requirements, so that we could identify the level of revenue that the system needs on an annual basis to meet its ongoing financial requirements relative to operating costs, capital costs, debt, and reserve, to identify the level of revenue needed in fiscal year 2015, this upcoming budget year, which you have obviously other items on your agenda tonight relative to that budget setting process, so that we could take the cost of service allocation and that rate structure and overlay on top of it the needed revenue increase that we have for fiscal year 15, so that a new rate structure could be implemented during fiscal year 15 that would reflect a fair and equitable cost of service distribution as well as recover the needed revenue that you have for that upcoming fiscal year. So relative to the cost of service allocation, the basis of the analysis with your current budgetary requirements, not the upcoming fiscal year, would be approved fiscal year 2014 cost requirements. We worked with the most recent fiscal year customer billing records and information for your system for all users. That would be fiscal year ending 2013. We then utilized the base extra-capacity method from the American Waterworks Association Manual M1, and I'll get into the detail of what that method is in a little while. It's commonly used throughout the industry for larger systems, and we would normally, in fact, use the approaches that we'd identified with others as part of developing Manual M54 for smaller systems based upon the size of your community, but for a variety of reasons, we went with a more detailed approach for your system. That was really due to the availability of very good quality detailed data that we don't often see for smaller-sized communities, also given the fact that you haven't had a recent comprehensive rate study completed in recent memory, and also the fact that there had been significant stakeholder interest and concern into the rate structures. We felt it was warranted to go with a much more detailed approach for cost allocation, which the base extra-capacity analysis embodies. We also then used the utility basis of rate-making for establishing the cost of service by user. What that means is instead of including your debt service expenses, we would include depreciation and rate of return. This is a common industry practice for doing these types of cost allocation studies in terms of using the utility basis of rate-making to establish the cost of service, particularly for users outside of the city boundaries. And we then adjusted that cost of service to include recognition of prior contributions that were made exclusively by certain classes of users and also specific facilities that are allocable and benefiting, providing beneficial service, I should say, to certain users to make sure that we had not only a good global cost allocation but very specific allocation of facilities as may be appropriate for certain classes of users. And we then developed the recommended customer classes identified on the slide, inside-city being one customer class, outside-city being a second class, which would be comprised of all customers in Manistee and filer townships, and then a large user category, which would be constituted by the Oaks Prison, which has a very separate and unique service agreement for the terms of their service. With that basis, we then went through basically a seven-step process to allocate the costs to your individual users and ultimately establish a differential in cost by customer class. We first allocated your costs to the different services between water and sewer service. And then within each service, we allocated the cost to the specific system functions. And this is a part of the base extra-capacity demand basis, which I'll get into in a moment. So we allocated the water costs further between what was associated with supplying the water versus treating it versus distributing it versus the actual point of connection in terms of service laterals and meters. And for the wastewater system, we worked backwards in terms of the meters and services portion, the collection system, the treatment system, and then ultimately what was used to dispose of the treated wastewater effluent. Once we allocated the cost to each function, we then distributed that to customer classes, inside-city, outside-city, and bulk users, based upon their demand characteristics or customer classification characteristics in terms of their connection size or meter size, to allocate those costs of each function. And I'll get into that specific allocation process here in just a moment. We then substituted the return on investment and depreciation for debt service expenses and also identified adjustments to the cost of service that recognized the prior contributions made by inside-city users via contributions from the oil and gas fund and also allocated certain specific facilities to your respective customer classes that were used and dedicated to serve them. A good example of this would be the service line built to connect to the Oaks. Those costs were specifically identified and assigned to that particular user. That was the type of process we went through with your staff. We then deducted the outside-city and bulk-user cost of service from the total requirements of utility to determine what the inside-city revenue requirement was for the basis of establishing rates and divided the revenue requirement for each class of user by their volume to determine the unit cost of service for each class of customer and to ultimately establish the differential in cost of service between the classes. One of the things that we're recommending is you adopt a uniform rate structure, and it's a two-part rate structure that I'll get into in a moment comprised of a readiness-to-serve charge and a usage charge. That fee structure should be the same for all classes of user, but the level of the fees should be different based upon the cost of service differential for each class of user, and that's what this analysis establishes, that differential in cost for each classification of user. The first step was to really distribute the cost requirements between water and wastewater. We went through the different departments and every line item within those departments to allocate the expenses between the water and wastewater systems. And the net result was that we had found that the revenue should really be more distributed to the sewer system than the water based upon the allocation of costs. It's not a very significant adjustment. Your current revenue generation is about 35% from water and 65% from sewer. The cost of service differential is about 30% for water and 70% for sewer. So you're within about 5%, which is pretty good, but it's enough of a difference that we would recommend adjusting that in the rate structure. From year to year, those cost allocations will vary slightly. Typically, if it's within 1% to 2%, we wouldn't recommend making any changes, but we get much above that and do recommend adjusting that. And a big part of the reason for that is the table at the bottom that shows of the investment in the water and sewer systems of about $36 million, almost 90% of it is associated with the sewer system. That likewise reflects in the allocation of the depreciation expenses and similar ratios on the debt service expenses. So obviously, the investment in the wastewater system certainly affects that distribution of revenue from a cost-of-service perspective. Once we allocated the cost to each of the individual systems, the water system and sewer system, we worked through the process of distributing those costs to each of the functions, source of supply for water, treatment, distribution, meters, and services, so that we could then identify what demand characteristic, what for each function was the biggest driver of the expense. And for that particular example, let's use source of supply. The source of supply system that you have has really served to meet total demands, which could be measured on an average daily basis. So we then distributed those source of supply costs to customers based upon each of those customer class's average day demands. We then took the treatment expenses, which your treatment system is sized to meet max day demands, but it also serves the average day demands. So we distributed your treatment costs to your customer classes based upon ratios of maximum day as well as average day demands. Your distribution system has been sized to meet peak hour demands and also meets a portion of the max day and average day demands. So the distribution system expenses were allocated to each customer class based upon peak hour demands for each class of user. And the meters and services costs were distributed to each of the customer classes on a per-customer basis adjusted based upon meter size. And that's fundamentally the process of why it's important to functionalize these cost-of-service allocations, so we can allocate them to customer classes based upon their usage characteristics that are consistent with how these costs are designed and built for your system to provide the service. When we go through that process, we then are able to distribute all of your operating expenses to each class of user based upon the demand characteristics or in the customer category based upon the number and sizes of the meters and services, so we can distribute operating expenses to classes of customer, your debt service expenses, and also depreciation and return on investment. And we then go through a similar process for the sewer system, again, using the sewer demands as opposed to the water demands to distribute the costs to each of the classes of users that we've identified. We then went through the process of performing the adjustments that we described, recognizing the prior oil and gas contributions that had been made by the city to the system that should be recognized in the cost-of-service differential analysis, and also identified specific facility improvements that should be allocated to certain customer classes to recognize that they should be directly assigned to those classes that they're benefiting. And we did provide credits as part of that process, recognizing that the base allocations of costs did include allocations for some of these types of facilities. So we were careful when we did the specific facility allocations to each class of user to then back out any overall allocations of similar types of expenses, so we didn't double count the category of expense for each class of user. And at the end of the day, when we went through the cost allocation process, at the bottom, the outside-city users, the cost per gallon is compared to inside-city users for water is 118%. So what that would mean is that under a new rate structure, whatever you would adopt for the inside-city users, that would be for outside-city users, the same rates adjusted for an extra 118%, or excuse me, an extra 18%. So it would be at 118% of the inside-city rates. For the wastewater system, as I mentioned, there's a significant investment in the facilities in terms of depreciation and corresponding return on investment that results in a significant differential in the cost of service for wastewater, that being 254%. So again, under the new rate structure, the rates for the inside cities would be identified, and then for outside-city users, they would be multiplied by 2.54 to reflect the 254% cost differential. That was the most complicated part of this whole process. There were a significant numbers, or a significant amount of numbers on those slides. We went through various line items with the stakeholders. We actually opened up the models to review some of those line item allocations. I'd be happy to pause for questions on this part of the analysis if you have them, or I'd be happy to continue for the remaining two phases, which will be much simpler than what we just went through.
Your distribution between your outside users and your extra-capacity users, is that based on current users of the system?
Based upon the most recent billing data available. So fiscal year 2013 was the most completed data we had available.
And if that base changed, then would the city then need to change that allocation, the percentages?
Typically, what we recommend is for, from a rate study perspective, the three elements that we described, cost of service, rate design, and the financial management plan, typically the first two components, the cost of service that we just went through and the rate design that we're about to talk about, you typically don't do those but every three to five years, and that's when you account for those types of changes in the customer base and their usage characteristics. It's a very extensive process to go through these allocations. Most communities will review those every three to five years or as conditions may change significantly. Financial management plan is something that's looked at certainly much more regularly. Most of our clients do it as part of the budgetary process.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be happy to come back to that point in terms of the cost-of-service allocation and other questions, but in effort of recognizing the other items you have. I'll keep moving. Please stop me if you'd like to. Now, for the rate structure that we're recommending, again, as I indicated previously, we're looking at a two-part structure, readiness-to-serve charge and usage rates that would be identified for the water and sewer systems. Again, as I indicated, the rates would be different for each of the classes of users. The inside-city rates would be identified, the outside-city rates would be then calculated based upon this cost-of-service differentials. We're recommending for the large user, this being the Oaks, that due to the nature of their service that they receive, the terms of their service agreement, you continue to reflect the differentials established in that service agreement. There are some complications there relative to some of the high-strength allocations of wastewater that they provide to the system that would result in additional cost allocations that we didn't go to that depth of analysis here. So based upon those factors, we recommend you continue with the current terms of that service agreement for the cost differential for that large user. The new structure that we have does not include any separate pill capital charges or any other types of fees. It's a very simple administratively easy rate structure going forward in that it's a readiness-to-serve charge and a usage charge for both water and for wastewater services. The readiness-to-serve charge then established to recover 50% of the system extra-capacity costs, the peaking costs that you have sized your systems to meet, that you stand ready to serve you around even when the demands don't occur. We would typically recover approximately or 100% of those costs in the readiness-to-serve charge, but again, we overlay against this the customer impact concerns. You presently don't have a readiness-to-serve charge for water, so the institution of a new fixed monthly charge for water is obviously going to have an impact to lower volume users. So we were mindful of that impact and recommended this as a good first step in terms of the readiness-to-serve charges recovering 50% of those extra-capacity-related costs. This recovers about 20% of the revenue for each of the systems respectively. If you were to put that at 100%, obviously that number would be in the 40% to 45% range, which that's more in line with what we see for utility systems in terms of how much of the revenue is recovered in fixed fees versus usage rates. But again, we're being mindful of the current system and the rate structure that you have and the impacts that would result to your users as a result of going all the way to 100% cost recovery on your extra-capacity costs and readiness-to-serve charge. And consistent with industry practice, that readiness-to-serve fee would be scaled by meter size. That does happen presently for your current sewer debt charge that you have. We would use the factors identified by the American Waterworks Association that recognizes the larger potential demands of the larger meter sizes, and as a consequence of those larger meter sizes and those potential demands, that rate structure would then allocate more cost to those larger meter sizes than, say, a smaller meter size based upon their potential demand. The usage rate would be a single usage rate per 1,000 gallons that would recover the remaining system costs, and of course, that would be in proportion to each user's use of the system. That would recover, again, about 80% of the cost requirement. Recovering 20% in the base fees leaves 80% in the usage rates to then have to recover. And I do have rate tables that'll show you this rate structure in just a little bit. One other rate structure piece that we did evaluate as part of the analysis was a system development charge. The readiness-to-serve charges and the usage charges recover your cost of repairing, maintaining, replacing your capital assets, and system development charges are used to recover the cost of that initial capital investment. They're one-time charges that recover the unit cost of capacity from new customers, and they really serve to maximize the extent that growth can pay its own way by providing funds to address those initial capacity costs that the utility systems incurred that other customers have been carrying. The system development charges would fund additional capacity costs, or you could use them to pay for debt service expenses of existing facilities that are being used to serve growth. This would replace your current TAP fees that you have that are $1,000 for each service for water and Oak for wastewater. These would be scaled based upon meter size, similar to the readiness charges, and you could also apply these on a per-gallon basis to the extent you had specific service agreements that you were looking at where you didn't have meter size information per se, that you could use estimated volumes as a basis of applying the system development charges. And we do have a schedule that identifies those. We use the reconstruction cost, new less depreciation of your existing system assets, deducted asset investments that were contributed either by individual customers or residential grants, included interest expenses to come up with the unit cost of each system, and divided that by the capacity in equivalent residential connections to identify the capacity cost. And then gave a credit for the future debt service that these new users would pay, so we don't double-recover our capital investment once initially and then again, once they connect to the system. And that would result in a fee for the water system of $200, which is less than the current $1,000 TAP fee. However, for wastewater, again, recognizing the significant capital investment on the wastewater system that we have, that fee would be $3,700 as compared to the current TAP fee of $1,000. So all told, the TAP fees would be moving from $2,000 to new system development charges of $3,900. Excuse me, let me back up. Should be an increase of about $2,000 for this one-time connection cost. This is something that obviously you may want to have further deliberations about in terms of the implementation of this type of a fee structure from both a policy perspective and then a practical one in terms of enabling ordinances. But it gives you a framework and a basis of understanding what your capacity cost is. But it gives you a framework and a basis of understanding what your capacity cost is in the system that could be applicable when new development occurs. The last component that we have is relative to the financial management plan, and the key issues that we identified when looking prospectively about the cost requirements of the system were first and foremost, the funding of capital. We have about $4 million over the next five years, and again, about 4.7 million identified for the second five years of our 10-year projection period. This really is indicative of your recurring annual investment. If you think about your asset base of about $40 million for your utility system or $36 million, you should be spending roughly about a million dollars a year on, or appropriating a million dollars a year for asset management and replacement, which about $4 million a year is about, or excuse me, $4 million a year or five years is right in the ballpark of what you should be spending on your system just to keep up with replacement and rehabilitation of the infrastructure given typically useful lives. So ultimately, the rates need to fund for it, but we do have a significant amount of debt burden on the system today that's been used to address a lot of the combined sewer issues. So we've developed a plan that tries to wrap in or increase renewal and replacement funding in the future as those debt payments diminish, so that we can have a level basis of annual capital expenditures for the system, but ultimately get to a point where the rates are funding that level of recurring capital need without issuing additional debt. And that's really one of the goals that we've identified as part of the financial management plan for the system to try and achieve. We've also identified important financial targets relative to operating reserves as well as debt service coverage. They're indicative of levels that the rating agencies would expect financially healthy utility systems, municipal utility systems to have, and we input those as part of the financial management plan as key policies that do have financial requirements associated with them. We've also factored in inflation and operating costs. We review multiple years of history to look at your specific trends in cost. We'll also overlay our industry knowledge and also discussions with staff about expected increases in cost to come up with good estimates for assumed cost escalation factors by each line item within the budget. And also, another critical issue was the historical and expected demand reductions on the system. I think you're all very well aware of the change in demands from the Oaks to the large user that's occurred, but we also have a projected loss of sewer volume from certain outside city users in Manistee Township that results in a revenue under the new rate structure, a revenue loss of about $100,000, which by itself would represent about a 4 percent increase in revenue that we would need to receive from other users. So it does have a bearing in the financial management plan, but that has been factored in. We also have factored in new customer growth relative to the Myers and factor that in as well, but that's very small in comparison to the impact of this demand reduction on the sewer side from those Manistee Township users. So what we developed was a plan of annual water and sewer rate revenue adjustments that would meet all of those requirements and be mindful of the challenges that we identified, to make sure that we had sufficient revenue to meet all of the cost requirements of the system, not only in 2015, but projected out over the next five and 10-year planning period. And what we found were that the revenue increases were very consistent with industry trends. In fact, I'm going to show you a graphic on that in just a moment. But what we identified was the need of revenue increases for the system of eight and a half percent for fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 16, but thereafter, three and a half percent per year would address the ongoing capital improvement requirements and inflationary pressures that the system would see, not only through that five-year time period, but that's also the projected level of annual increase beyond that to keep up with continued operating and capital cost inflation. The asterisk in 2015 is important because with the recommended rate structure changes that we're talking about, users will be affected differently based upon how much water that they consume, and in fact, many of your typical users would actually see very small increases. Some will see lower, or actually reductions in their bill. I'm going to go through a couple of customer impact charts about that relative to the fiscal year 15 portion of this presentation. Now, one of the things that many people aren't aware of is that the Consumer Price Index that's maintained by the Bureau of Labor Statistics is actually made up of about 200 different goods and services, one of which is specifically the cost of water and sewer service to households. They assume the same level of consumption each year that they update this index for water and sewer service, so it really is a measure of the national average change in costs or change in rates for water and sewer service. And we've plotted that change in that index since 2001 in red and compared that to the city's historical increases during that same time period. And you can see initially that the city was pretty much on track with that particular index, but then fell off for a few years and then started to make some adjustments to try and catch back up to that index, and you can see recently, there was a fairly large adjustment in 2014. I've then overlaid on top of that, through 2014's data, an extrapolation of the index based upon its 20-year average and the projected increases that we just identified on the prior slide to show you that you're still looking at a level of increase in your utility system that's not only very comparable with the industry, but in fact, over about a 15-year time period, you're about 20 percent less than the industry. So many people think of inflation as being 2 to 3 percent a year. That may be overall inflation, but water and sewer utilities not only have to deal with inflation, but they have to deal with aging infrastructure and regulatory requirements. So inflation to a utility system is more along the lines of about 5 to 6 percent per year as opposed to just 2 and a half to 3 percent per year. And that's what this shows, is just some additional information summarizing what the rate of increase has been in the index. The past 15, or past 10 years, it's been about 7 percent a year. It's been rising pretty significantly over the past 10 years, but looking back 20 and 30 years, it's about 5 to 6 percent per year. Now, what does all of this mean in terms of our recommendations for your consideration for rate schedules and the customer impacts of those schedules? Well, with the new rate structure that I described, a two-part structure, and an eight and a half percent increase in revenue for fiscal year 15, we've developed rate schedules for the three classes of user, inside city, outside, and then for the large user, which would be the Oaks, in terms of what the monthly readiness to serve charge is by meter size and what the volume metric rate is by class of customer, reflecting the differentials from the cost of service agreement or cost of service analysis for the unique service agreement for the Oaks. And to put it in perspective, I've identified for you that for water, your current inside city rate is $3.37 per thousand gallons. That absent any structure changes, given the need for an eight and a half percent increase in revenue in fiscal year 15, that would go up by about eight and a half percent. But what we're recommending is what's in the table above. For the wastewater system, we've identified a similar schedule of readiness to serve charges and resulting usage rate by class of user, and again, identified what the current rate is for wastewater users. And again, remember also that this embodies also a reallocation of the revenue from water to wastewater based upon that cost of service differential as well. What this means to your inside city users, we've highlighted different potential or typical usage levels, but 6,000 gallons is a very typical amount of residential consumption, and identified what the current water and wastewater bill is and what the total is, the 67.26, and what that would change to under the new rate structure and all the recommendations that we have. The water bill would actually reduce slightly, the wastewater bill would increase, the net impact would be an increase in that bill from $67.26 to $70.42, which would be a $3 increase or 4.7 percent. So that would be less than taking that eight and a half percent rating or revenue increase and applying it across the board to your existing levels. In that scenario, all users would see an eight and a half percent increase. In this case, your typical users are sheltered from the full extent of that, and we're also enhancing the fixed cost recovery and financial stability of the system by implementing these readiness to serve charges at the levels we're recommending. And lastly, we've also identified just a summary of the distribution of revenue by class of user under the existing rate structure from all fees and charges associated with water and sewer service, and compare that to what it is under the proposed structure, just to give you a sense of how the overall revenue change occurs. But fundamentally, you know, from the inside city user perspective, the more relevant comparison is really how is this going to impact the monthly bill for service? With that, that's concluded a presentation as high-level as I could do while doing it justice. I'd be happy to entertain any questions and discussion if appropriate.
I guess I would like to get a copy of the PowerPoint and look it over. You've given us a lot to think about, and, but if I could get a copy of it and look it over at my leisure and then, you know.
We'll submit that electronically to everyone tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pending the files, if I can't go, if the file is too large, then we provide hard topics.
I would appreciate that.
I think you did a very good job of finding a very complicated system, so.
Thank you. We've had a bit of practice with it.
And I have to say, this is the second time I've sat through the presentation, and I'm still trying to grasp everything, but it was absolutely presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing on the 2014-15 budget and capital improvement plan. The city fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. Under section 7-4 of each hour, a public hearing is required in the budget, which is adopted no later than May 15th of each year. A work session was held on Tuesday, April 8th, with an additional work session scheduled for this evening. Optional work sessions are scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd and Tuesday, April 29th. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the May 6, 2014 meeting. At this time, the public has an opportunity to comment on 2014-15 budget and capital improvement plan. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on the budget? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Barry Petolsky. I live at our own property at 159 Quincy Street, and I appreciate this time to make a few comments. City mayor, council, and management. As a city property owner and taxpayer, the fiscal year 2015 budget theory is poignant and disturbing. Once again, the taxpayers paid residents are being told, "Sorry, there is no money to repair your local streets. Your totally failed streets would just have to wait. There is just no money for essential local streets." For the last decade, the city has been spending money on non-essential items as if Manistee was growing, drying city and not a town with decreasing population, eroding businesses, lack of jobs, and a shrinking tax base. The taxpayers have seen and remembered the massive cost overruns of the Marina and the Ramizville, and thus the resulting debt. Rather than requesting a vote in support of a tax increase for non-essential items, the city has now backed itself in unfortunate situation of asking residents to vote on a tax hike for essential items. How many households and private businesses would survive under the practice of spend for fun, now pay later, and ignore essential items? The answer is not many. So now taxpayers are being told, "There's no money for pothole-infested and unsafe streets." Streets like Quincy Street where the road is literally turning into gravel with areas of no asphalt base left. But wait, there's over $440,000 in the fiscal year 2000 budget for non-essential items, including $278,830 to subsidize the failing ramps of theater, with over 1.6 million of subsidies since 2006 and another 1.6 of debt. What has been the result? The ramble of operating loss before capital expenditures has increased in the past five years in a row, from a loss of $48,000 in 2009 to a loss of over $293,200 in 2014. Should anyone on the council not recognize the amounts, I say I would recommend that the city finance director, he requests to present the council a normal business operating statement rather than a fun accounting activity for all city enterprises. Such an operating statement will not intermingle subsidies as revenue, and thus the actual financial performance of the city's enterprise businesses will be disclosed as if it was a standalone business as all enterprises are supposed to be. In fiscal year 2014, the projected revenue of only $69,000 for the ramble was 25 percent less than in 2013. The loss before capital expenditure would be the highest in the history of the theater since being operated by the city. The projected 2014 loss of $293,000 is 49 percent larger than in 2013. The financial stability of the Ramizville is not improving, it is getting worse. The fact is, for every $1 revenue generated by the theater in 2014, $3.50 of subsidy is required to keep the Ramizville doors open. Much of the money needed to repair the local streets lies within the Ramizville theater, but it's not over yet. Additional capital expenditures are still being planned for the Ramizville, and yet more subsidies are projected to be required for the foreseeable future. How many private businesses would tolerate financial performance of the Ramizville, and how many would contribute to invest in capital and to avail business? I believe we all know the answer by looking at the closed storefronts throughout Manistee. A real solution for a Ramizville is needed now. Given what time, it's not a solution. Time has proven to work against the Ramizville. In the last five-year period, the annual losses has grown by $235,000. This is not an accomplishment, it is not success, and it's not a bank for the buck. So with this in mind, residents are being told, "There's no money for local streets," which, and some of which have not been repaired for over 70 years. The city has reaped a tremendous financial benefit from deferred maintenance costs of these streets. These streets have given their all, they are now turning to gravel and need to be replaced. So why are they still not being repaired? Because the city has placed a higher priority on more non-essential items. The city Marina also requires an annual subsidy, and still can't afford to make principal payments on the internal debt owed to the oil and gas fund. The fiscal year 2014 operations of the Marina follow the same trend as the Ramizville. Revenue was projected to be 7.4 percent less, and the loss to be 160 percent greater. Clearly not a success, yet the city plans to spend another $100,000 on the Marina for dock improvements. Certainly, the state, the Ramizville Marina, and business for the city, but where? What is the measurable tangible benefit that can be directly linked to these operations? No one seems to be able to answer that question. The city needs to stop running businesses and start running the city for the residents and taxpayers. I read in the city manager's letter to the budget, a statement which was made that not having the Ramizville would only save the city $100,000 per year. That would assume the Ramizville has no market value at all, that the building is worthless, and that worse, and that even worse, that all past subsidies and incurred debt was simply wasteful spending. I truly hope that was not the case. It is time for the Ramizville and Marina to be privatized. It is time to cut the losses and move on. So again, the city residents on poor streets are being told, the city has no money to repair them. But the capital improvement plan states it has $325,000 in 2018 for yet another boat run. It has money for more beach improvements. It has money for park improvements, for a community pool, and the list for non-essential spending to go on. It is long past time for the city to spend money first on essential items in Manistee, the road infrastructure. It is time to be clear regarding the previous investments the city has made in the streets. The fact is, the state, not the city, has made overwhelming majority of the investments. It is time that oil and gas revenue earnings are used for local road repairs and not non-essential items. It is time for oil and gas funds to be used for local roads repair as well, and not as loans for non-essential items. It is time that bonds are issued and loans made for road, roads, and not non-essential items. To define local roads in poor condition and given priority, do not instruct residents living on poor local roads to carry more tax burdens when in plan that does not address their poor streets first. I suggest the city council and manager go back and relook at every non-essential spend and cut them. It is time that a serious budget capital plan is presented to the taxpayers, which takes care of the essential items, our poor local streets, the poor streets, not just repairing one-hand-picked street to repair from now throughout 2019 as indicated in the capital plan. All streets which are unsafe to the city need to be addressed. Streets are decade older than, and in worse shape than 12th Street. Thank you for your time. Frank, one more comment. Frankly, the street capital plan that's out there is too little, too late. Thank you for your time.
Sir, anyone else would like to comment on the budget? Yes, please come forward, state your name. We'll be limited to five minutes in comments.
My name is Linda Beaton. I am a full-time resident, property owner, registered voter of the city of Manistee. I live at 256 Hughes Street. I am a Realtor, but I am speaking on my own behalf as a resident of the city and not on behalf of my company. It doesn't really matter who said it first, but go big or go home has worked its way into our speech and is certainly pitting on the issues facing Manistee. We have a new city Marina, a refurbished theater, a new fishing cleaning station, new beach bathhouses, and a roundabout we all learned how to drive. Thus, great efforts on behalf of the community, oh, two great efforts on behalf of the community, the Vogue movie theater has been rebuilt on donations. This has all been accomplished through one of the toughest recessions my generation has ever lived through. It was not, it was not done without controversy, but it wasn't all financed by the taxpayers either. Grants helped some along the way. Even though I'm not speaking on behalf of my company, I can certainly speak as a Realtor. As you know, per- As you know, curb appeal is everything. Visitors, potential buyers, like what they see in the downtown area. They can see that over the last few years, we have polished and improved many areas. All of this does resonate well for the people looking for business opportunities and relocation. Condo sales were down in 2012 and more than doubled in 2013. Home sales in 2013 have reduced inventory levels, which is generally good news for anxious sellers. Again, not without controversy. Manistee, along with most of the rest of Michigan, got smacked pretty darn hard with loss of manufacturing jobs. Property values plummeted and reduced city budgets by that loss of revenue. Rightly or wrongly, Governor Snyder struck back and passed the Right to Work Law. Grand Rapids has undergone huge growth in auto component manufacturing as a result. And of course, not without controversy. But as a Realtor, who loves a town, I've adapted. Curb appeal is still on my mind. It's not easy showing people all the cute little houses, for example, on the north side that have, and have potential customers remark about the poor condition of the streets. Visitors do notice our streets. Curb appeal and lack thereof. I have to show people what they want, so I will take my customers where they want to go to see something better. That's my job, and it's also part of being ethical. But as a resident who pays taxes, I think it's really time to get serious and talk about how to address this issue. Because at the end of the day, I do think our city government owes many long-suffering residents better streets. It's part of health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Additionally, better streets equals better curb appeal. Better curb appeal equals higher values. Higher values equals more revenue. It's a necessary investment. This is not just a problem for Manistee, it's a problem all over the state. Royal Oak will try to float a millage proposal based on a survey they did. 57% of their residents would favor a modest increase in taxes only if it was to go to maintain and restructure local streets. I wish them luck. It won't be without controversy. Hillsdale will entertain a city income tax.
Speaker, how does this pertain to the budget, please?
On streets. Hillsdale will entertain a city income tax solely dedicated to roads, which again will face controversy. And controversy is nothing new here. I'm here tonight to ask the city council and the city manager to see what options other municipalities are looking at to overcome not just the loss of revenue from the tax base, but what we can learn from contacts in the Michigan Municipal League to help pressure the state to restore state revenue sharing dollars and remove restraints on road funding enacted in the PA 51 funding formula. I also recognize and appreciate the city continuing to look for solutions, but it would be beneficial to share some of these ideas with the community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on the budget? So now we'll move on. To citizen comments on agenda-related items. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda?
My name is Bruce Schaub. I noticed that I was nominated for the Tree Commission. It's S-H-A-U-B.
Thank you.
Can we apologize for so long?
So anyone else would like to comment on tonight's agenda? So now we'll move on. unfinished business, we have none new business. Consideration of M.D. Annual Trunk Line Permit. City Manistee obtains an annual permit through the Michigan Department of Transportation to complete maintenance activities, operate utilities, and implement programs such as Boston Boulevard within the US 31 right-of-way. The resolution is required to ensure all parties are aware of responsibilities and obligations. Is there a motion to approve the performance resolution?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornicle, support by Councilmember Goodspeed, to approve the consideration of M.D. trunk line permit. Okay. Is there any discussion? Speaker, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Let's go back and go through the consent agenda. All agenda items are marked with an asterisk around the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, approval of payroll, notification regarding next work session, consideration of a resolution administrative professionals week and day, consideration of special Olympics tag day, consideration of the National Day of Prayer gathering at City Hall, and consideration of an Eagle Scout resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornicle, support by Councilmember Cody, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Speaker, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to ID under new business, consideration of creating an adopt a park program. Over the past year, the Parks and Beautification Commission has been researching how communities across the state have been successfully engaging community members to participate in keeping community park systems healthy and viable. The proposed adopt a park program provides a community, groups, and individuals a way of becoming involved with the park system while keeping the efforts coordinated within the Parks Department. At this time, council may action approve. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the action, creation of adopt a park program prepared by the Parks and Beautification Commission.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, support by Councilmember Whitlow, to approve the creation of adopt a park program. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would talk to one of the members of the Parks Commission just before the meeting. And I think one of the first things I would like to head up is cleaning the Riverwalk sometime this spring. If anybody would like to contact me, we could set up a date and time and kind of pick up the trash along the Riverwalk. But I think it's a good program, and I think it's going to go a long ways.
And I'd like to thank Roger Zielinski and the rest of the Parks and Beautification Commission for all the hard work they put into this. This is something which I've looked forward to for several years, ever since it was first mentioned. I believe it was Councilmember Goodspeed who came up with the idea on one of our council bus tours of the city. You did an excellent job, and I'm very impressed with the document you came up with.
Any other comments? Speaker, please take the roll.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consideration of applicants to boards and commissions. In January, the city clerk took action to advertise vacancies on various boards and commissions, including the Historic District Commission, the Ramso Theater Governing Authority, and the Tree Commission. Since that posting, additional applicants have been received. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Historic Commission, two vacancies, one expired term ending 2/2015, and one three-year term ending 2/2017. Applicants must be a city resident, this is a council appointment. We did have one applicant who has since rescinded their application. So both vacancies on the Historic Commission remain open. Ramso Theater Governing Authority, there are two unexpired terms ending 6/3015 and 6/3016. This is a mayor appointment. We had one applicant, Joseph Federick, 3765 Chamberlain Road, Arcadia. And he qualifies for... I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joseph Federick to the term ending 6/3016.
Can you support?
Can you support that?
I'll support the mayor's appointment.
Yeah. I bet that's satisfactory to handle it that way.
Mayor, you please take the roll.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the Tree Commission. There was one vacancy, a three-year term ending 12/3116. It's also a mayor appointment. We had one applicant, Bruce Schaub, of 3/38 Fourth Street, Manistee. I'd like to appoint Bruce to the one-year vacancy.
I'll support the mayor's decision for appointment.
Can you please take the roll on that?
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Thank you. The Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, there are three vacancies, one expired term ending 3/3115, and two, two-year terms ending 3/3116. This is a mayor appointment. We had one applicant, Todd Miller, of 6 Barrowman Road, Manistee. I'd like to appoint him to one of the two-year terms ending 6/3116.
I'll second.
Mary, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornicle.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
I'd like the city clerk to go ahead and advertise for the remaining open positions. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Julie Beardsley when we part on activities of the city assessor's office.
There are six sales in 2013 in the city, which caused uncapping of taxable value as it's required to by state law. The sales data is entered on the assessment roll. There is principal residence exemptions that are processed, resins, conditional resins. The sales data is analyzed and compiled by neighborhoods for the determination of land value and what are called economic condition factors. F of the East, it's called the ECF, is applied to buildings in 44 residential, commercial, and industrial neighborhoods in the city. Some neighborhoods are joined for sufficient data. The ECF acts as the infrastructure of the assessment roll, and what it actually does is it takes the State Tax Commission manual that we use to price buildings and adjusts it to the market through an economic analysis called economic condition factor. So what it attempts to do, the ECF adjusts this pricing manual to the market in each one of these neighborhoods. So it's entirely a market-based system. Now, that being said, I did want to mention this. It's a commonly held misconception that if you purchase a property, that the following year, the property will be assessed at one-half or 50% of the sale price. That is not allowed by state law, rule, or regulation. This is the way the sales data is compiled and analyzed to adjust to the market. All the sales are compiled as the infrastructure of that neighborhood, so you don't have individual up-down, up-down, because sales can vary from the assessed value and depending on what the situation is with the buyer and the seller. The assessed value that I determine must match a projection of true cash value made by the Manistee County Equalization Department through sales and appraisal studies. If this does not occur, the city risks the impact of an equalization factor, which would be applied against every class of property and also a possible loss of revenue. It's very rare in this day and age to see equalization factors. I just... It's a three-step process. Starts at the local assessor level, equalization department checks value. The final equalization occurs at state equalization the fourth Monday in May, where they have the power to remove or add value to any taxing jurisdiction in any county in the state. This is an economic condition factor map. You can see, these are the 44 neighborhoods, both commercial, industrial, and residential. Just as an example, the north side, East Washington and West in Washington are two economic neighborhoods. And in some areas, there's not quite enough sales to join them, for them to stand alone, so they need to be joined together for sufficient analysis. So you will see what's called an ECF that may be different in each one of these neighborhoods. Of course, Harbor Village is separate from that as a condominium, as a shipwatch down here. And then you see these remainers. It's a little harder to see this coating. We have a golf course neighborhood in here, Golden Apron neighborhood, MS Tyson Edition, Maxwell Freeland, US 31 East to Davis. So those are generally... Those are the areas, so the sales are compiled from each one of those neighborhoods. An economic analysis is done, and that sale data is applied against every building in that neighborhood. So it's an entirely market-based system. Now, we're talking about assessed value, you'll remember. Assessed value is an entirely market-based system. Taxable value is based on capping and is allowed to increase by a rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. The rate of inflation for 2014 is 1.016, which is a 1.6 increase. And of course, the State Tax Commission determines the rate of inflation. Some people thought that was the assessor's job, but no. So we can see through the years, Prop. 8 was instituted for the 1995 year, and you can see through the years the differentiation in the consumer price indexes. This inflation rate is compiled by the state of Michigan using three or four different factors. The taxable value changes shows, you can see from 2009, which would be the royal blue, through 2014 to the gray, and then you can see the decrease in taxable value over the This is a taxable value percentage change, 11 to 12, 12 to 13, and 13 to 14. The 11 to 12, you can see there was a 3% decrease in taxable value. Your tax revenue is based directly on your taxable value. Any individual tax bill, you take the taxable value and multiply it by the millage rate, which is 1,1,000, move three places to the left, and that equals your taxable. Minus 3% in 11, 12, 12, 13, minus 1.8, minus 1.41 in 13, 14. So we're making a little progress in terms of what's happening in the market, because you will remember that the assessed value has a direct impact on the taxable value. It acts as a governor. The taxable value generally was here, assessed value here. As it rises, the assessed value acts as a governor. So if your assessed taxable value is the same and continues to be similar, the taxable value, of course, cannot rise above the assessed value. There's your assessed value change through the years. I was, I think it was about, I was comparing the 2014 taxable value and what that meant if you were loving the city's same millage against 2009. And Ed confirmed this in the budget papers. If we were loving the same amount of millage against 2009, taxable value would be additional $360,000 a year in revenue. The tax base and the impact the tax base has had on the budget is unmistakable, and in some cases unfortunate. But here's the good news. But here's the good news. If you look here, this is assessed value percentage change, and you will remember the assessed value is half of the true cash or market value. From 11 to 12, you saw a 5.11% decline, 12, 13, minus 3.92. And 2013, 14, we were hoping that we would, with the 200 sales and the adequate amount of sales data available, we were hoping to break even or perhaps. But there were several different factors that entered into this. It's kind of like walking up a sand dune. You go up one, and you slide back two, and you'll see why. But actually, this is good news for all of us in terms of probably the largest investment any of us have, which are our homes, because nobody wants to see their value decline, yet nobody wants to pay more taxes. But also, it's good news for the city in terms of the revenue stream. This shows, what this is, is a graph that shows construction trends. It's kind of a net. You have the growth, new construction, and personal property, which is direct construction, improvements, additions. So you have the growths, and then you subtract demolition, exemption, and loss of personal property. And what happened in 2014 is we had two new laws, one of which was a disabled veterans' exemption, allowed 100% exemption from property taxes beginning in 2013 for qualified veterans who must be unemployable, permanently totally disabled, titled the veterans' benefits at 100% rate. They have to file an affidavit with the city assessor accompanied, accompanied by DD 214, and a letter from the VA stating they're either unemployable or 100% disabled. Unremarried spouses are able to take advantage. The Board of Review is the one who decides these exemptions. It is not the assessor. Generally speaking, I have veterans come in and meet with me personally to re, to review all of their paperwork to ensure that all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted. We have a Board of Review that likes the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. And so we make sure that everything is in order, because generally speaking, people do not want to come into the Board of Review. So they're able to submit their paperwork to me. I present it to the Board of Review, and the decision is made by them. The, in two, for the 2013 exemption, there is only a two-week, actually, really only a two-week period for exemption for veterans in 2013. The State Tax Commission is allowing a 2013 exemption. July 2014 is the only time that can be applied for. So all bets are off after that for 2013. We had 15 exemptions. It was a loss of a half a million dollars in taxable value, which is nothing to sneeze at. $20,500 loss in revenue and a $9,300 loss in revenue to the city. We're getting exempted to death. And not that I don't think that the eligible veterans exemption is a good exemption, but the bottom line is the city is getting exempted. And it's not just the city of Manistee, it's happening all over the state of Michigan. There is an exemption for just about anything in this day and age. For an example, there is an exemption now. We have a new developer that bought lots over at Harbor Village, which is an excellent sign for us. Those lots on the far end of Fifth Avenue, where you've been next to Joe Vicente's, those vacant lots, those all sold to what is called the Oxford Group in Grand Rapids. I worked with them extensively, because those lots were under appeal. So when they purchased them at a much reduced price, because they bought them from the bank. But there's an exemption. Even when they begin to develop that property, which is their plan, they also bought, you know where the pond is in Harbor Village? You can see it from Fifth Avenue, you look down. They bought that vacant lot around there, and they, they will develop that as well. But there's an exemption, unlike when Harbor Village was being developed. The state's instituted exemption. For the first several years, they'll be able to be exempt from taxation on developmental properties. So when I say we're being exempted to death, that's the type of thing I'm talking about. When you see new development, nine times out of 10, there's an allowance for an exemption. And I know Mitch struggles with that as well, because it's complex and time-consuming, even the granting of the exemptions.
But the city doesn't have anything to do with the exemption. It's the state.
Well, the state's funny. They kind of say, here, you can exempt everything, but it's up to you.
It's up to you.
It's up to you. But, but what city is not going to exempt property for the sake of development? The WINSPIRE, the personal property at Mastech, well, that exemption just expired this year. And because we had a contract with them that said it would expire this year, but that's what I'm talking about. There's personal property. The WINSPIRE development, which never really panned out, but they've been exempt from, you know, several million dollars worth of personal property for several years, so.
And we don't have people.
But how could we say no to that at that point in time as a community? You're looking at jobs, you have potential for manufacturing, of course, and we're going to agree to the exemption, but it doesn't always work out. So it becomes somewhat competitive between counties, cities, townships as well. Who's going to give us the biggest break? It's just modern life. Okay, eligible personal property exemption. Here's a new exemption that was put in place. This is part of a string of personal property exemptive bills that will be coming, coming down. There will be an election in August. The question of, actually, it'll end up being almost a total exemption of personal property over, well, until 2017, I think. It'll be gradually phased out. Will be decided by the electorate in August. This first phase in of this exemption, it was kind of like an ad, Michigan, state of Michigan ad for the actual vote in August. It, this year, it was commercial, industrial, personal property, furniture, machinery, and equipment, combined true cash value of less than $80,000. They had, the taxpayer had to file by February 10. If they were late, they could appeal to the March Board of Review with their filing. It's 100% exemption. It's called a small taxpayer exemption. This was the first year for that. On January 15, it became quite clear that taxpayers were not filing for their exemption. And after speaking with the finance director, we decided that it would be in the best interest of the city of Manistee to encourage people to apply for the exemption, because if they did not, they would come back to us anyway later for the exemption. It would end up being a ton more work, and they were eligible anyway. So we mailed 400 blank affidavits to all the personal property taxpayers explaining the requirements and process for filing an exemption. Finally, 226 out of a possible 292 taxpayers filed the exemption, about a 78% return. There are about 348 personal property accounts in the city by comparison. This enabling act again will be repealed if it's not approved by a majority of the qualified electors of the state. We're going to vote in August of 2014. If it is repealed, we would then, again, remove the exemption from the 2015 assessment roll and kind of back to square one. It resulted in an estimated loss of $1,675,800 in the city's 2014 personal property taxable value, $78,900 loss in revenue to all check taxing jurisdictions, and from this, a $31,200 loss to the city of Manistee. Poverty exemptions have been in existence for a long time. I just wanted to point out that there are two more opportunities to apply for poverty exemption. Board of Review processed poverty exemptions in March. They'll have taxpayers another opportunity July 22 and December 9, last two meeting days. The exemption applications are available downstairs by the ladies behind bars with the water. At the water department, there's a yellow folder there in behind. Of course, these meetings regarding the hearing of poverty exemptions are publicized in the News Advocate. Taxpayers, sometimes our poverty exemption applicants are not really able to advocate for themselves, are able to find a representative, but it has to be by letter with a notarized statement. The Board of Review has the right, again, the Board of Review decides these exemptions. These exemptions can be extremely, extremely time-consuming for both me and Board of Review, because it's a 10-page application. Again, Ts crossed, Is dotted, the Board of Review is exacting and wanting all of the pertinent information that's required, because there's a lot. Michigan income tax return, home heating credit, lots of stuff. The Board of Review may ask the applicant to appear before them. They have the right to do that. Those are the guidelines for federal poverty exemption guidelines. These are the guidelines that the council adopted. They, as determined by the state of Michigan, you can adopt a lower rate, you could adopt a higher rate. These are the guidelines that we used in 2014. Again, all of this is included in that application that's available by the water utility window downstairs. These are the number of appeals. We have a Board of Review, we have an excellent Board of Review in the city of Manistee. We are very fortunate this year. Ed Kriskowitz stepped up and took Tia Toxietis' place. There in Ferguson is the chairperson of the Board of Review, and Linda Beaton is on the Board of Review, and they are extremely professional. They dealt with some extremely complex issues in regards to Mountain Salt and Harbor Village and did an admirable job. Just so that you know, it isn't always like this. There is a taxing jurisdiction in Manistee County where the Board of Review denied nine veterans' exemptions, even though the veterans were fully qualified, which is not in keeping with the law. So I think sometimes when you have a Board of Review or a group operating at peak, at peak performance and doing a great job, you don't always appreciate what they're doing until you look around. So I appreciate them, and we're very lucky to have them. It's time-consuming. Okay, that's the number of appeals we've had over the years, so 2014 is in keeping. These are the data retrieval statistics, which actually, I'm glad to see those go up. You know that all of the city's assessment information is online. It's accessible through the city's web, the city assessor's part of the city's website. There's a property search link, and homeowners have a free lookup. Otherwise, there's a $2 fee, and you can also do a sales comparison analysis online. VSNA is the name of the software that we, VSNA provides a software the city uses. And that just tells, that's the, that's the address of our data. And I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to take just a minute if I could. The county flew aerials in 2013, and we were very fortunate, the city was this year. And previous years, actually, I think at one point in time, we paid like $6,000 to help the county. And this year, we did not have to do that. The sales of the aerial photographs go back into a fund, and they were able to secure some grant funding. So I wanted to show you quickly, if I could, what this information looks like. Just take a minute of your time. Okay. This is the computer program that we use, VSNA. This is the parcel for the Blue Fish Kitchen. If we did this, I can show you just briefly what the property record card looks like. There's a sales history here. It shows all the permits that are pertinent to that building. Unfortunately, we have the back of the building as a picture. Always something to improve upon. It shows what, what the change in the assessment was for the Blue Fish. I'm just showing this to you as an example, because people are familiar with this building. We have lots sketches for every parcel. And this is the actual pricing information. You go down here, you see the total depreciated cost. And these are the sketches. These are done floor by floor. That would be the first floor, knee wall, treated wood deck, bar and lounge on the second floor, and the basement storage. And these are, this is the information, just using this as an example, that is available for every parcel in the city. We have land and building sketches for everything, and mostly pictures. So we have pictures of the majority of the parcels. Commercial and industrial are the ones that we still have, not quite all the pictures we need to see. But what I wanted to show you... Now we're in 2050. These are the aerials that the county flew. Ed Radford assisted me and Chad Collins from Equal Geographics to get the information loaded from the county. You can see here what's modified. I went and adjusted all the industrial and commercial land values on Manistee Lake this year. It needed to be done badly, which was, it saved me a huge amount of work, because if you're adjusting land value, you want to make sure that you've got every parcel on the lake. So you can click on this, and then this is a different parcel, but if you click on that, this is Hopkinson's, then you go right to that parcel. So you can click by click, find different parcels. And then you can zoom in, zoom out, increase your area. So if you're looking, let's say, for example, I need to increase the land values on River Street. And when I double-check and see, I could go from parcel to parcel and click on those and get the parcel to come up. There's Port City, that's Gail Bussell's property, and these are down here. Manistee Investments, Doc Gardine, Barry Lynn. So it, it really works. It saves an incredible amount of time. And just as an example for taxpayers, we're just starting to use, of course, in the city of Manistee, you need a fence permit. I had a young couple come in. They wanted to put a fence up, but there was a garage encroachment on their properties, which makes a fence permit a little more difficult. I was able to print that for them, so they could actually see how the garage sat, where the property line was, and then they then took that across the hall to the knees, which made it easier for them to issue that fence permit. And that's just a small example, but we'll use it more and more as time goes on.
But it worked great. That was my most, it was excellent. Go ahead.
Okay. And then there's different things. Then these come, I can't, there's some, there's an infrared layer right now that's not displayed. I'm not sure where it's at, but I think that, any questions on that?
Pretty cool.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate that. Mitch wanted me to send my, my presentations were two more, so I didn't have any pictures, so I had to show you the aerials. Any questions on the presentation?
Oh, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, if there's any, any questions, just give me a call.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services activity... This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Rogers, Westgate, 529 First Street. I just want to publicly thank everybody that worked on the parcel beautification on this , Dr. Hart. I want to thank parcel beautification for all their hard work, staff, and Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Ross Spencer, and I live on Eighth Street. It's a small condominium, but on the applications the city uses for boards and commissions, we have the box on there. Is the person going to be at the commission meeting when their appointment comes up? But nobody ever gets recognized. You never introduce anybody. So it seems like that's kind of rude that we should do that. Or if we're not going to do that, then that box has no real purpose on the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Now we'll move on to officials and staff. Mayor, do you have any?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney?
I do, but would you mind going around the horn real quick first while I look something up for you?
City Attorney?
No, nothing, Your Honor.
Director of Public Safety?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
DPW Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Anything else, City Assessment?
Nothing, thank you. Well, that was funny.
Engineering?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cody?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Beaton for her comments, and I assure you that we are going to look at rules. That's all.
Councilmember Goodsping?
Mr. Speaker. No.
Mayor Potem's there?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Wood?
Next Tuesday, I will not be at the root session, if you have time. And today, I had Steve Blank called me about the BV Steel Company. And Robbie was downstate and purchased a steel company and is taking the assets out and moving those up to Manistee. So that's some good news for us.
Councilmember Goodsping?
Yes.
I don't have anything to move on to. Sitting here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just briefly, and the timing is for two of us. We committed, staff committed to come back to council and discuss where we're at. Let's make sure that, there it goes. Come back and talk to council about where we're at with, on streets. Staff has discussed internally, how do we make a meaningful impact of the overall street network? That was what we were charged with, is how do we make a meaningful overall impact? And in order to know that, we have to know how much needs, cash, needs to be invested to upgrade both the major and local street system. So this is what we have been working on internally as staff. Our recommendation is to follow the process laid out in the asset management plan. This is a plan that you have adopted. It is a plan that we have recently updated. These are the various steps of the plan. Assess current conditions, Paser rating. Either that has been done or will be done in the very near future. It's done on an annual basis, it's something we do. Select appropriate treatments. We've been over that concept. Estimate treatment costs and budget constraints. Predict future conditions of street network. Establish street network goals and performance measures. Evaluate impact of various treatment alternatives. And identify, prioritize, and select projects. Looking at number seven closer, here really are the criteria. You have the asset manager plan. So on page, I think if you have your asset manager plan, your asset management is on your Dropbox, on your studies. You can't find it anywhere, and we'll find it for you. On page 25, it identifies the different criteria on how to select streets. I don't believe this is an order of priority, and I think we have to put these in priority, but it's also staff's recommendation to follow these 12 steps which have been laid out in our asset management plan. Detail engineering, conditions of road base, traffic data, future water and sewer work, future known grants, should be known, not known, projects, future known projects, condition of curves and gutters, economic impact, dispersion of projects around the neighborhoods. We know that we can't put all the funds in one district or one neighborhood. They've got to be dispersed throughout the community. Mobilization of contractors, and safety issues. Those are the criteria that the asset management plan has set forth to allow us to maximize the use of our funds. Major streets. And again, these slides are directly off, some of the slides were previously presented to council on two occasions, one in December, then one in late March. Based upon the, and I know council's not going to see this, but based upon the upper right-hand corner, the current funding model of $156,000. If you look at this current year here, 13, and you look at fiscal year, I think it's out '21, '22, somewhere in that timeframe, over this 10-year period of time, if we invest $150,000, we're going to be able to hold our own on the major streets. That's with $150,000 investment. Pretty decent impact that we're on, as you see on this chart. But all in all, it really doesn't bend the development curve all that much. If we were able to invest $150,000 into the major streets, at the end of 10 years, we'd have 12% good, 71% fair, 17% poor. And these are the models that are spit out under the asset manager Paser system. If we're able to invest $150,000, we know that bond proceed comes off in 2015. If we were able to invest just slightly more than that $150,000, between $25,000 and $50,000, we think we can make a meaningful difference to the major streets. And clearly, that's going to need to be a multiple-year commitment, we think up to at least 10 years. So we're holding our own, if you will, here. With a few more dollars, the $25,000 to $50,000 on top of that on an annual basis, we can start bending that trend up and keeping the good roads good, improving the fair roads, and trying to get the poor into the fair category or the good category. Local streets, much more challenging than major streets. We've talked about that on multiple occasions. Major streets traditionally qualify for category A grants, which are economic development grants. They qualify for small urban, which we traditionally get one every three to four years, about $350,000. Local streets are not eligible for those particular grant dollars. And looking at our local streets, we believe we need to invest approximately $400,000 a year for the next 10 years to make a meaningful improvements over our local street network. However, even with investing $400,000 over a 10-year period, you would still not be able to meet the needs of all the local streets. It would not be enough to meet all those needs of all those local streets over a 10-year period. This chart, again, you've seen before, council. This is the do-nothing chart. Consider $5,000 some crack ceiling, for lack of a better term. Essentially, we're doing nothing. We can, whoops, excuse me. We can see that the deterioration curve is going to increase in the quarter of our poor streets by the end of 2013. Roads will continue to deteriorate. We'll have, at the end of the 10-year period, we'll have one good, 1% good roads, 12% fair roads, and 87% poor if we continue the current investment model. If we invest at $200,000, it does help the overall network. All good or poor streets. You notice there's no fair streets in there. And again, this is the data which is spit out by the computer system, the computer model. Over that period of time, over the 2023, 48% good streets, 0% fair streets, 52% poor streets is what we would have. Those are rough numbers. Clearly, it's not going to be those exact numbers, but I think it gives you a really good illustration about what those funds will do. Local funding at $400,000 on an annual basis over 10 years. You see, we break that trend to improving the system even more, helps the overall network. We still only have good or poor streets. And the fact of the matter is, all the poor streets, the vast majority are in poor shape. So when you rebuild them, they go automatically into the good category. They don't go to the five, six, seven of the Paser data, they go up to the eight, nine, or 10 on the Paser data system. And that's why, that's just the way it goes. 77% good, 0% fair, 23% poor. So the question is, how do we fund the improvements? We've talked about that in the past, council. In staff's opinion, that'd be the finance director, myself, and the Department of Public Works Director. Absent eliminating entire departments, you can throw in there the Red Bull Theater and the Marine Anno, those various things that were mentioned previously tonight. There's not sufficient funds in the current fiscal year budget to make street improvements. We believe this to be true. The capital improvement fund is currently committed for the next several years at 80% on current projects. That's a fact. We need to generate between $400,000 and $450,000 in additional revenue to upgrade the C systems in a meaningful way. So the question is, how do we get there? We all know, and the budget identifies, that each mill generates $177,000. The current available millage under our current heavily cap is .4655 mills, which would equate to approximately $82,000. Manistee is a 20-mill maximum charter community. Can't go over 20. That's a nerd charter. If council chose to put on the ballot, looking at a heavily override to reinstate up to the 20 mills, that would provide an additional 2.2388 mills, which would generate $395,000. That could be designated for street improvements. If you add the current available millage of .4655 to the 2.2388, you come up with the 2.7043 mills would generate approximately $478,000. If you add in the $150,000 which comes off in 2015, which is the River Street Bonded Act project, just so we can remember that, it's the River Street Bonded Streetscape project, approximately $628,000 would be available for investments. So that's where we're at so far. We needed to really look at what's going to make the meaningful impact, where are we at? There is going to be, as we move this project forward and bring more information to you, that we will have to incur some costs from our engineering firm. We're going to need to do some coring data to ensure what is the base flow of some of the roads. I'm always amazed at the variety of materials that have been used in Manistee over the years. Road valleys, a lot of cinders, and various other products that have been used in road building. Most of those aren't acceptable in today's day and age for road building. A lot of them have held up awfully darn well, quite frankly, for getting their age. But we need to look at that, so we're going to have to spend some funds for some coring and some additional engineering. I'm pleased to say that the engineer firm that council has selected has worked on several road and millage projects with other communities. The most recent one would be the city of St. John's, where they assisted them with educational material and preparation of materials and information at council. And we'll be utilizing their experience as we continue to move this forward. So again, I just wanted to give council an update tonight, where we're at on looking at these things. We've had several meetings, we'll continue to meet diligently. This is going to take up a significant amount of time over the next year to ensure that we have this information that you're looking for. One of the things that we need to talk about is citizen involvement. Where do we go on citizen involvement, and how do we do that? And I want to have that as a council discussion, not staff providing that, but staff providing some recommendations to you, but that really needs to be a council discussion on how we move that forward. So that is the update I have for you tonight on what we've been talking about internally, working, trying to find some of those sweet spots of the revenue stream to make some meaningful impact on the road system. Do you have any questions? I'll try and answer those. Great, thank you very much.
So, any motion to end the meeting and adjourn into a budget work session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. We're going to take a break.
Meeting...
For two on loan, they initially requested $2,500. After the budget was delivered, they, when they actually submitted their stuff, they wanted $3,000. So I checked with the director, and she said they would like to be considered for $3,000 instead of $2,500 in the budget. For the Saints, the DPW director and myself need to work out the arrangement with them since it's a change from how we've done it in the past. And we'll be discussing with them and incorporating that into next year's process so it's a little bit smoother. The AES contract does expire September 2014, so in that light, we budgeted the same amount without obviously subject to any new contract that we enter in with them. For the Veterans Council, there was a little bit of a mix-up because they had some change in leadership. I think my memo itself explained it. Basically, there was a period of about two years and three months that spanned three of our fiscal years, and they got only one payment in those years. So the 2012 one, they did not get because they did not request it. And the 2013 fiscal year payment, we didn't pay until October, which would have been our fiscal year 2014. So in conversations with Stan Price, who's the treasurer, he said they don't need and don't like to have a lot of cash in that account, and that the one payment that was missed isn't a big deal for them. So what we're going to do is, we're going to make a payment in June. So the budget will show zero for last fiscal year and $2,000 for this fiscal year. And in future years, we'll pay that in June, which is when they like to receive that. So I just wanted to clarify that in case there are any questions.
In future years, it will be then $1,000?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
And I also included the M.A.S. pool agreement and an article in the New Hampshire, I don't know if everybody saw that, I thought it was somewhat interesting, they were talking about the finances of the board. So that was that memo. The other memo that I sent had to do with the source of funding for the capital improvement projects. So in the capital improvement plan and the budget in year one, there was a little over $4 million in projects identified. And my memo broke down the source of funding for each of those. So for parks, for example, most of that is capital improvement fund, but there are also some grants. And then I also said how the projects would be paid for, and those are going to be paid for in cash. And my memo goes down through each of those. The biggest item, obviously, is water and sewer, at $3.34 million. The funding source for that are the water and sewer utility revenues, obviously. But for this one, there was a proposed bond issue. So that's really the only one, with the exception of one water pool item, that would require special financing. Everything else would be financed in cash. So I think those were the two questions that council had regarding that. And I also sent out some more proposed budget to projected this year actual for people to look at because that was requested as well. I had sent that information out.
Any questions of Ed? On that information, I mean, clearly, there's more type of discussion standing before we bring Chief Mike up, or...
Do you want me to put you on that document?
Beaton. Your Honor, if I could just start with a little statement and give a little history on the police department and our staffing, I would like to. For the past several years, our number one priority in the police department has been to retain the position that we had. Towards that end, we eliminated through attrition and one layoff. One sergeant's position... Towards that end, we eliminated, through attrition, in one layoff, one sergeant's position, at least two patrol officers, two full-time practical positions in exchange for one twenty-hour week part-time person. The addition of that, we shifted one officer to the drug team, which gave us about a fifty percent saving in an officer's salary, but also significantly increased the amount of drug enforcement and activity in the city to, we're getting phenomenal service from our officer in that team. When we first hired on, we would pay overtime to fill a second person in the car. Back in ninety-eight, we had a lot of money and things to go over with. We quit paying overtime to fill that second position in the car a long time ago. We used tribal officers for part-time for a long time, when tribe paid us money to employ them and keep them certified. That went away when the sheriff deputized and it was no longer a necessary peal for them. Since then, we worked our law enforcement partners to make sure we had coverage and backup for officers on the road from other departments. For all those two years, the tribal police had enough staff where they were, we would call them up and say, we're gone to one car tonight. Could you commit your extra car to the city? And they would have a car actually in the city, always available to, to back up the city officer and assist them. Their staffing levels have diminished as well, and they no longer have the staff to commit that for about a year and a half. The addition of state police left, and there are only three state police troopers assigned to the Manistee detachment. Three. Budgets and lack of funding have built our resilience for a lot of years now, and we worked hard to trim, trim, not only the fat, we trimmed the lean, we trimmed, we trimmed the lean. Today, find the reality of the position where we're no longer able to put two officers in the car twenty-four-seven. This afternoon, I met with my union and my sergeants, and we made some adjustments. We're studying, which will put more officers on night shift. We put, something I said I'd never do, I put my sergeants on twelve-hour shifts. For me, the delivery period, that makes them less effective to me as a boss, and it makes them to me the only consumer, by half the staff, because they're working on, on the twelve-hour shift. It's not ideal for me, however, in further obligation, but does put more coverage on the road on nights from eleven a.m. till three o'clock in the morning. My comfort level is still high, going to one officer from three a.m. to seven, and seven to eleven, typically during the week in the daytime, because myself and Sergeant O'Reilly are there, but we have more guys signed up to patrol. Just to illustrate the issues we have, the problems that we have, this stack of slips represents all the time off requests for officers for fifteen months. If we weren't doing better time off, we wouldn't really have a problem. Yeah, at one point down, we had three officers off on injured status. So from January 2013 to the month of April, we had four hundred and fifty-five night shifts to staff, that's seven p.m. to seven a.m. Of those, one hundred and sixteen of those shifts had one employee on duty. Of those shifts, fifty shifts, the officer worked by himself for more than ten hours. Thirty-one shifts, they worked by themselves for eight hours. And thirty-five shifts, they worked for four hours or less. Twenty-six percent of the night shift total had short staffing. Ten percent went for a full shift, a full twelve-hour shift by themselves. Seven percent went for eight hours by themselves, and seven and a half percent went for four hours by themselves. Typically, for a four-hour shift, what would happen, someone would be tired, they would go home early, they would take a common or a big cake, or sit down and go home, or they would come in late. So that amounts to about nine hundred and eighty-eight hours that, that we would have had to fill those shifts. Would cost us thirty-five thousand dollars to fill those shifts with overtime. Last year, our total overtime budget, we spent twenty-one thousand dollars total, and that covers training, court, all the stuff we have to fill on river access. It is impossible, at this point, using our partners and our own staff to fill those shifts twenty-four-seven, or even with the short shifts from three to seven, seven to eleven, to fill with two officers in the car with the gap we have. Couple things we can do. We could bring our officer back from the drug team. That really isn't a net return for us, because we come back, we pay his full salary plus we have to pay, we were paying thirty thousand dollars to the drug team to have an officer not in it, so they didn't cover it. And that thirty thousand dollars, in my opinion, didn't get us near the coverage we get from heavy officer assigned and dedicated to the city, Manistee, and take care of our service. We could hire another employee, and I'll tell you the moral of the matter of that app. I sit in meetings all the time on the budget with the finance director, the city manager, and unions. I know that we recently balanced this current budget with eighty thousand dollars in savings on healthcare costs. That eighty thousand dollars was spread amongst the staff as addition to propays and premium The alternate plan for healthcare for employees saves the city ten thousand dollars, and their unions are negotiating that issue. If the unions end up with a ten, ten thousand dollar savings, the message is, the seventy thousand dollars relates to bodies in the general fund budget. So if we, as the union groups, if they, if they save, if they go with ten percent, ten thousand dollar savings, and the city has to find seventy thousand dollars in the budget, someone's going to get laid off. That's the message, how it plays out, I don't really understand yet. If the city council determines we need another employee, and the city council decides to fund that from the general fund, someone's going to get laid off. And I'm here to tell you that I believe the departments I represent, the police department and the fire department, would have no comfort level at all in accepting a new employee to the detriment of another full-time employee working for the city today. If the DPW had to sacrifice somebody, put another officer on the road, they would not be, we probably wouldn't, if we could, nice up if we wouldn't. If Mr. Bradford's office had to lose an employee to fund another police officer, we wouldn't, we, we would, we would actually fight that. So unless there's a solution, in my mind, that comes from another funding source other than the employee base that we have, I don't have the answer for city council, you know, in presentation that I have tonight. And that's, that has probably so much for us in the last week, to have this discussion and try to say that without getting my hand fired in the morning. It's a stressful event. It's stressful for every employee who works here, it's stressful for the city manager, it's stressful for Mr. Bradford, it's stressful for every employee who works here. That's why the union president's been in the room today, the DPW's here for the same reason. I would never ask you to sacrifice one of theirs to give to me, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, okay, ethically, where I live, but, so that's kind of the level that we're faced with. We need more people, we need an additional value to the department, we would love to have too. I can't make that request in a budget, in a budget presentation in a fiscal year after somebody knowing full well that from the general fund, that means somebody else loses their job.
I don't think we're asking you to do that, you know, to put yourself in that position. I think it's up to the council as a whole to find the funds someplace else without laying off somebody from the DPW or the fire department or wherever.
I hope that's true, but I, I wouldn't have known that to be true unless I could have assembled a thing tonight to make sure that we all understood the same dynamics and we're all dealing with it.
So right now, the state police, they're assigning three people to the Manistee County, right?
State police department workers are, have, have no value in my scheduling.
So we can't, we can't rely on the state police?
No.
Can't rely on the sheriff's department as a whole?
Sheriff's department has minimal tapping them up, and they have a lot of, a lot of kind of cover. In emergency, everybody shows up.
Yeah.
But in emergency, they may be along my way. And by changing my shift, we just took the problem and we plugged it to a whole-on-night shift, where we created a day-to-day shift. And I would say to you that, that day shift isn't safer than night shift. Paul Waterfield was killed in broad daylight. The officer in Traverse City was shot and killed in broad daylight. The officer in Lightnington last year was shot in broad daylight. Every school shooting, every workplace violence that happened in America, in small-town America, happened in broad daylight. So just because we're short day-to-day shift does not mean it's safer in America, it is not automatically safer if bad stuff happens twenty-four-seven, and we never know what's going to happen today. I carry a rifle in my car, simply because I expect that someday I'm going to have to respond to a, to a shooting incident for an active shooter, and I know that I'm before it's in a situation where I'm probably going to have to respond to the first responder, and I want to be ready to do that if we have an active shooter in one of our schools or some of the buildings. It's a reality that we deal with every single day.
Now, when I asked that question last week, you know, I was looking for the cost of adding an additional person, so that we had a little bit better coverage, because there was concern for officers and only having one in the vehicle. I was not looking at it as far as, I'm looking at what it would cost, what we would need to do as a council to raise those funds, but I was not looking at it as a, well, we're going to have to decrease headcount over here. That's not how I was intending that.
That number's about eighty thousand dollars to hire, outfit, and train a new police officer in the first year.
And then the other thing that we had talked about was the potential of volunteers, and you'd see it work in other areas, and looking at that, I know we were trying to get a grant for that, that didn't happen, and then that talk kind of died down a bit. What, looking, what is the possibility of that and the cost to do that?
The budget to hire reserves, for sick reserves, was about twenty-four thousand dollars, that was the grant was. I can tell you that a reserve program would not fill the hole. A reserve program would very nicely supplement an additional staff member, but it would not fill the hole in our schedule that currently exists. So if we, if we hired another employee, I still would pursue funding with the revenue sharing board when I thought the opportunity was right to fund a reserve program. Because even if I had another employee, I still have to give people this. I still have to deal with, with the officer who collapses and needs a pacemaker, or the officer who breaks a leg. And those guys are down three, four, six months at a time, and that creates a hole. Again, so, another individual, let's be filled a shift, let's be training employees, let's not people have normal time off. The reserve program would, would fill those gaps and put a second person in the car when we were light, so to speak. We still would have potentially someday when we would go to one person from three to seven a.m., because it doesn't make sense to me to always have two, three people all night long till seven o'clock in the morning, just so one person can take some time off and go, go home and sleep. Doesn't make sense to me, because I'm wasting a resource because there's not much happening from three to seven. So that concession allows the officers who work till seven o'clock in the morning the opportunity to go home early, by letting them go in one car, knowing full well that they've got to work that deal with each other, saying, are you feel comfortable me going home? And it, and it's not uncommon at all for the officers working midnights to say, are you okay me going home? And they go. If the other officer says, no, I'm not okay going home, the other person would not, would not be.
Who was it, yeah, last week, we had some discussions that mentioned the law enforcement academy, and possibly, they have to do practical, so to speak?
Internships?
Yes. Is that a possibility?
We have an intern, we have an intern working with us right now, he is strictly a student, they have nothing, they, they provide zero to us in terms of assisting our staff, they are wholly, they're in education capacity.
Nothing more.
Absolutely, absolutely zero value to us in terms of safety, support, equipment, Gary, Joe.
You know, I guess it's sad, and it's not only our department, it's departments throughout the state, that we have to put a dollar issue on officer safety. You know, and it's nothing against our department, nothing against you, it's, you know, this is reality throughout the state, but, you know, we have to put a dollar, you know, we got to come up with the money for officer safety.
Throughout the country.
Well, yeah, and my feeling is, you know, we've got to do something, because I, you know, like I said last week, we, we wouldn't expect the fireman to go into a burning building by himself.
Can.
And I wouldn't expect a police officer to go into a domestic or whatever by himself.
And know what I, if they showed not to, we wouldn't have a problem with that. But yet, John Petty was on a hold on Hopkins Street inside that fire, waiting to show up to go fight that fire. I guarantee you, Kurt Ingoodspeed and the other officers on night shift have been at that door when someone was life in danger, someone was screaming for help. There's no way, as a police officer in uniform, you can stand back and go, huh? You gotta wait for that.
I, and I totally agree with you. And I, and I wouldn't expect them to go in. You know, I, you know, I would feel, I would feel really bad if they went in and got hurt, you know, I...
I would. And, but the very first step of the use of force continuum is officer presence. Seeing a police officer can change the dynamic of the situation that happened inside. I, I don't expect the officer running a burning building to safety either, and I ask not to do it, but, man, it's like a dog on a bone, it's most of them there.
But we have to, but we have to, you know, we have to put a dollar figure on hiring somebody to, so this would, this won't happen.
Risk management, that's a very bottomless thing.
And I don't, and I don't advocate putting two men in one car, but if we could have two cars out, you know...
We did that, I would talk about safe gas, if you recall. We didn't do the safety issue, we did the safe gas. But then when we lost other people in the county, it became a safety issue. When, when we knew that your backup was either three minutes away or thirty, or, we just kept them together for a safety issue because there just wasn't enough people to respond quickly on night shift. Right now, we don't let them double up until after eleven p.m. because of daylight, we want people to see them. But when eleven a.m., eleven past seven a.m., I allow them to double up. The new shift will probably have more single cars out.
We go to a fire call, the cross-trained officers, it gets paid overtime. Where's that money coming from? Does that come out of the fire or the police?
City PD budget, we pay the police officer, the police department budget, we pay the fire department budget. It's just a bookkeeping issue, it's just, the officers are assigned a payroll through the police department, and I want function that, that they serve. I, I did do the numbers on that. In 2013, we had a lot of fires, it was a big year for us. We paid officers eighty-five and a half hours of overtime at thirty-three dollars and sixty-two cents apiece, to the tune of two thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Sergeants had eighty-seven and a half hours, had forty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour to three thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, for a grant total of six thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-two of twenty-one thousand dollars spent.
Is that for training also?
No, that just, that is just for fires. That's not for training, that's just...
Fire training?
No, sir, that's just for fires. That is just for responding to long-hands calls for a structure fire. And every call that they went to, with the exception of two on Park Avenue, were actually structure fires.
And we have a rough, and I mean, rough idea of what it costs to, in overtime, to send somebody to training?
We didn't pay a dime in overtime to train anybody for fire training, not a dime. We just instructed, we don't pay overtime for that.
How many officers you have of training, twelve for training?
All three of them, after the introduction, and myself.
Okay.
All right. Just so I'm clear, the eighty thousand, is that fully loaded, or is that just salaries?
That would take a entry-level police officer with benefits, uniform, training, the whole different.
Okay, so if we were to add to your department one person, that's eighty thousand. Say if we were just looking at a reserve program, I'm not saying that the benefit is equal here, I'm just saying, a reserve program would be helpful, but not the same as hiring a full-time person. That would be about a twenty-four thousand dollar investment. And then, a third option would be the increase, changing your schedule up, increasing overtime, however, that comes at a detriment of adding more hours to a person's schedule, and that costs, did you say it was about thirty-six thousand in overtime?
That would just cover night shifts.
Those night shifts.
That would cover the whole of the day shift.
But it increases a person's twelve hours, the number of times they're working in twelve-hour shifts.
Sure, then the officer working sixty, sixty-five hours a week, changes their retirement plan, and where the mile productivity goes down.
You can count on somebody to commit on overtime all the time.
I'm just trying to get...
We always could order someone on overtime up to sixteen hours in a day. I wouldn't, I don't allow anyone to work one sixteen-hour day. So if a person worked twelve, and someone had to commit to that shift, they can't take four, they can't take twelve. There were days in, in past history where the guys had worked twenty, twenty-four hours in a row, and we don't allow that.
So those are basically the three ways that we'd be able to address some safety concerns in this current year budget, and those three scenarios with about those different costs?
So the first year would be about eighty thousand, and then it would kind of decrease after that, wouldn't it, after you got uniforms and...
Well, there's the mainest costs, then there's death increases, and if they get married, they have a family, changes, blue cross.
Probably still sixty-five, though.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, not a huge savings, but then after, after five years, they go through all those steps, and they, and they become a full-time... those steps and they, and they become a fully loaded, and it's about eighty thousand dollars before you're going.
So this whole thing is just a night, we haven't addressed the weekend days? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I did not bring anything else as a weekend day shift. Right now.
We have one, do we, and I'm not trying to fight, but we have one officer on Saturday and Sunday here in the day.
We have one officer routinely on Sunday is what, I will always go to one officer on Sunday. It's extremely slow day. I'll always go to one officer on Sunday with a comfort level. We try to keep two on on Saturdays. I don't believe we always do that, I did not do anything else on Sunday.
Okay, just a question.
Question, hey, I thought you made a comment that you had nine hundred and eighty-eight hours of overtime, is that right?
Yeah, nine hundred and eighty-eight hours that we didn't fill with overtime.
Oh, and fill with overtime.
We didn't fill it, we left vacant and didn't fill it. And those, and those shifts that were, were left empty, those twelve hours and eight hours, have we filled those with overtime that cost about thirty-five thousand?
Is the one officer on Sunday, chief, is that year-round? You have one officer on Sunday that goes year-round?
They're not routinely scheduled one on Sunday, but my comfort level and I would go to one officer on Sunday. I have to go back and look at the schedule to be sure, hundred percent. My expectation is we could always go to one officer any Sunday throughout the year. Now, suddenly following, unfortunately, weekends, we would pay overtime to bring people in for specialty tasks to do that routinely. We bite into that, but we don't budget for routine patrol, put a second officer on patrol on Sunday, just, just patrol.
So for a twenty-four hour period, for each shift, you only have one officer on Sundays?
It's possible.
One on days, one on afternoons and one on nights?
There's no afternoon shift anymore.
It's a twelve-hour shift.
It's either days, either days or nights. And I would, I would suspect that following back to the schedule, there'd be, of those fifty incidents where there were fifty shifts, there were twelve hours in shifts, one person, there probably was a similar schedule on day shift where there's an officer on fifty other shifts that were on day shift. But those aren't, those aren't all weekend either. Any day of the week, you could have had the same officer detention.
So you're applying eighty thousand dollars.
So even eighty thousand dollars won't fill all the, the empty, the empty shifts, right?
Eight thousand dollars would allow me to put an officer on and do a pretty good job to fill almost all our shifts. It would then allow me, if I needed to, to put some overtime that I have to, to fill some shifts, overtime that I have in my budget. It also gives me the ability to have one officer who's kind of a swing guy, and we give him three and then we switch him all over the place. So if we knew someone could be on vacation or going to training on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we may bring him on another shift and fill that shift. It'd give me, be a lot more flexibility with that person as well. We could probably fill ninety percent at least of our shift with other officers, with two officers on the street, then we'd probably use overtime to fill that ten percent if we felt there, if there were hours at my comfort level.
But my concern obviously is, is the same as, as the rest of council is, when we, it's, it's really across the board for all of the city staff, is we have gotten extremely good at, at whittling down our, our departments to a very, very skeleton crew, and we're fortunate to have some really seasoned veterans and, and a great leader in that area, but you never can predict who's gonna get hurt, who's gonna, and then those efficiencies start to dwindle and, and the, the ability to retain those, those folks becomes a big struggle. And I, you know, from a, from a law enforcement perspective, as well as a city staff perspective, I hate to see, you know, squeeze those so tightly that we end up losing them because they, they'll go someplace else because there's better benefits or, or better pay or more coverage. And again, I feel like we're definitely caught in the same boat that Indiana County is, but um, our, if we really believe that our, our employees are our biggest asset, we've gotta find strategies to, to, you know, address some of the gaps, the holes, all those time off requests. Can't expect these guys to work sixty-five hours a week, that's, that's unrealistic.
It helps in reality for every employee I have, the more burden we put on our employees, they get young people with families and they're paying thousands out of their pockets and they're not up to the pay scale. They start looking around thinking, hey, I could get a second job or be any different job. It doesn't have the same reality as government has. Everybody, we're sure we are now, in my department, is passionate about their job and they'll workshop it. But there is a day when the dollars and cents says, I got to go to somewhere else because I can't feed my family and pay these help, they're bringing in other families at the same time. It's a, this is a new news in City of Manistee, by a director, where he has a family, a full family, I have a full family, we talk all the time about the burden of that. And if you're making thirty-five thousand dollars a year and you have the burden on that employee, it's really tough.
What's the average household, I mean, the assessed value or taxable value, do you know?
The assessed was, it used to be about fifty, but I'm not.
Do you know the tax, the average taxable home value is?
Thirty-five hundred, hundred and ninety-seven mil. Can I calculate your home value?
Sure.
Hundred and ninety-seven million divided by thirty-five hundred.
You should have me do that.
Say that again, Julie.
Hundred and ninety-seven million divided by thirty-five hundred.
Fifty-six, two eighty-five?
Seven thousand.
So say, we, council deems this important, there's absolutely nowhere else in the budget to cover that, an additional person in the police department would be about a half a mil, which would be about twelve to thirteen dollars additional cost per household.
Now, tonight, you heard us, I don't, I don't know where I, from the presentations that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, you heard that you still have point.
Two, eight, six.
Point four-six-five-five mils underneath the current, oh, thanks, Ed.
Best page.
So currently available millage, this is under the head of the cap, so. Ed provided me an email this morning, this afternoon, which laid out, can you just give me one second, council? Yeah, could pull it up, real quick, so I'm trying to get where we're currently at with the millage, that's, that's where I wanted to be.
Seventeen point two-nine-five seven.
So we were, so remember, we were a twenty mil maximum community, but heavily kept rolling back, rolling back, rolling back, rolling back, rolling back. So again, the seventeen point two-nine plus the fourteen, four, point four-six-five-five, that takes us to our current headly max. If you put, if you use the point four-six-five-five mils towards a, another body, per se, eighty-two thousand two hundred dollars is your approximate amount of additional revenue which will be generated by the City of Manistee. That does not require a vote of the public. That's a council action that can be taken and moved forward. I'm not saying should, I'm not saying should, but I'm simply saying it's not a heavily override, you would just be coming up to that maximum level.
That would cut into local street funding.
Well, I'm making some major assumptions. The public would vote for that and that's a done deal, and that's the direction council wants to go. It would dig into our conversation this evening on the streets and some of the information that I provided you towards the streets, who'd have to, council, just to tell.
Just call me Big Head.
I know, I didn't say that. You'd have to reduce the approximately eighty-two thousand out of the, so you'd have four hundred thousand, roughly three ninety rather than the four hundred thousand available for that. So rather than six twenty-eight, five fifty-ish, somewhere around that.
Cause I don't think there's anywhere else in the budget that we can cut, and it's obviously.
You could, you could, you could look at general fund, you could look at fund balance to augment and fund balance.
But, but this is a long-term solution, I'd hate to use short-term.
Yeah.
The only reason, the only reason you would use fund balance, the only reason you would use fund balance is if you believe internally, I would not be comfortable making that recommendation to you, but if you believe internally that we are on the cusp of turning that corner and revenues are going to start to increase and more revenue would be available in the future, and you'd use that fund balance as it's intended for, is a short-term rainy day fund, if you will. So if you have that comfort level moving forward in the future, then I think you could look at it as a short-term rainy day term, rainy day fund, similar to what you've done with Ramso, you know, three specific years, or look at that Ramso, if they have, put that sixty thousand dollars into it, I think that would be legitimate, but you'd have to come to terms with yourself that you believe we have met that bottom and we are coming out of that.
But if we use, if we use the four-six-five-five mils right now, and then down the road, if we see where that curve is going up, you know, we could always, we could always change, couldn't we?
Say that again.
If we, say we use the four-six-five-five mils of eighty-two thousand right now for, for one, and then we, if we saw that our, you know, things are improving.
The mills are generating more. The mills are generating more.
Yeah, rather than a hundred and seventy-seven, it's generating a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But we have not increased the millage in more than ten years, almost ten years. We've actually decreased it on the refuge.
I think it's actually been more than.
Sixteen years, something like that.
I think it's been, I think it's, I think we're pushing fifteen to sixteen plus years. And we have this decline, but it has not increased, there's the chart.
Hey, ninety-eight. Councilmember Horn called, just as you might recall, back in the two thousand five, two thousand six range, there was, and that was when there were, there was a lot of discussion about the refuge millage.
Sure, yeah.
But we, the council directed staff to go back and cut.
A mil.
One mil, yes.
So that's why we're, we're below that headly cap. So that, another way of looking at it is you, the council can levy whatever millage rate they want underneath the headly cap, they just can't go over that headly cap.
So when we, when we removed a mil back then, in that year, so that was one full mil, are we saying that the value of that mil has dropped from one mil to point four-six-five-five over those years?
Um, I don't know if that's accurate, I have to analyze, we also dropped.
That seems like a drastic.
We also dropped, right here, it's two thousand six to two thousand seven, went from seventeen point nine five to sixteen point nine five.
That would have been the year that we reduced it, that would have been that year. Right?
I believe that, that's when Mayor Fuller was the mayor hiring, yeah, I can recall us. I mean, that was the refuge.
Yeah.
Well, and then if you recall, the reason was that we weren't able to counsel, there was a disagreement among council on how to move forward on the refuges. That was an attempt by Mayor Fuller at that point, how to reduce that value, that, that burden upon the taxpayer, which we did.
Could I say something? I think the City of Manistee needs to be exceptionally proud of the fact that they have not levied their full headly millage. And in view of that, I know of only one other taxing jurisdiction countywide, and that would be nine-one-one, where they currently reduce the military, that does not levy their full amount of millage under the headly limit. I don't really know of another taxing jurisdiction in the county.
It is an option to levy it.
It is.
And then, is there any other discussion on police department? I mean, those are, those are the various options that we have if we want to address the safety concerns that we have.
So you have eighty thousand roughly for a new, twenty-four thousand for a reserve, we're looking at approximately thirty-six thousand dollars in OT costs.
Right.
See that again, I didn't understand.
Eighty thousand dollars would be the cost for a new officer, training, equipment, uniform, gun. Twenty-four thousand approximately for reserve, I think you said five?
Yeah.
So five reserve officers, twenty-four thousand, and thirty-six thousand for additional OT to help eliminate those, those one-man car shifts.
And I guess I don't understand, we're paying them roughly to start up, I just told them for thirty-thousand, thirty-two thousand dollars for you to start up, correct? Just want you an idea, just give me some numbers. Ask them out, here it is.
We'll get it for you, real quick.
How many, well, I don't know if you start with wages, wages, thirty-two or?
I guess the contract opened right now, cause I was looking at it. While you were talking, I was trying to find something.
The starting wage is about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
You throw pennies on top of that, another twenty, you're up to fifty-five probably.
Okay, and I'll put in, we'll say five.
I'll just ask the question directly.
I have to give a number, but we can, we can use that for Walmart right now.
So, what do we say?
That's sixty, sixty-five plus five, so that's sixty.
So the, you're telling me the other twenty is roughly, and a guess, to pay, if, if they're, the FTOs are on and they're gonna work with the FTOs, where's, where would that other twenty thousand dollars fall off of you?
Would you give me another council agenda meeting, another worst case scenario?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I will not prepare to give you the exact number tonight.
And I'm not asking, I'm just.
You're doing the same thing I do when I come up with eighty thousand and you come up something cheaper.
But that's for the first year.
Understood.
Next year, they get a raise?
Understood.
Insurance goes up, I, I understand all that. I hear, you gave us an eight thousand worst-case scenario. I'm thinking the first five years personally, it's not the worst-case scenario. At, at, at the five-year mark when they max out, that's where the worst-case scenario would be, thousand dollars, in my opinion, but I could be wrong and I'm okay with that. I've been wrong before.
I agree, I agree, Aaron, on the side of being too high and I have enough money to get enough, that's true.
In any case, unless we dig in somewhere else, any other option, really, to support any kind of changes, looking at the village. Let's, then earlier tonight, we had a presentation on water and sewer.
We did. In the budget, in the fiscal year budget that you have in front of you, there was a, and this was, they were, they were moving down simultaneous paths, if you will. So as we were preparing the budget, Bertman Associates were, the Burton Associates, excuse me, Andy Bertman, Burton Associates was moving on a parallel track of including this report. We had included in there, based upon three point four, almost three point five billion dollars in bond materials, of which the vast, vast, vast majority of them was on one or two items which weren't state mandated, that that would, taking care of those particular issues, we were looking at a nine percent increase this year. The rate study that came forward from Burton Associates came in at eight point five percent for a two-year period of time, and then started rashing down after that, moving forward, which I think is important to point out, the, the rate structure that they proposed is what we talked about internally for quite a while with staff, which is you've got a lot of fixed costs that, that really should be covered by the rate of surcharge. And that chart that Andy showed is the impact, when you, when you shift some of the revenue that needs to be generated onto that readiness of surcharge, you impact different users differently. With the way we currently are required to set our rates, that's pretty much an even across the board to all classes of customers regardless of their volume. The new rate schedule, if you were to go to that, would, would take your six thousand gallon user, which in, in what we proposed in the budget, would have that nine percent increase, and it would take their increase down to like four point seven percent. Four point seven percent. But for somebody who's gone all night long, instead of paying six sixty a month, they're gonna pay higher than that because there's, even though they're not drawing water, all the infrastructure is there to provide that water, and that's, that's what he talked about when he said.
But this is a more equitable and fair way of giving a rate.
Following industry standard practices.
Yeah.
The AWWA industry standards were the rules that they used in preparation of this, and that is kind of the gold book or the gold standard in rate setting across the United States.
We actually, I downloaded a copy of the AWWA number one manuals, I wanted to try to familiarize myself with a little bit, it's three hundred and fifty pages long. I mean, it's, it's, it's what they follow. I mean, it's, it's, it's what they follow. I, I would like to give you a direction tonight as to how council might want to, might want to proceed or not to proceed with the rate study. If council feels like they want to go forward with the recommendations, then I need to get back with Andy and get some of the actual schedules that they put up in their model, and I can come back and reincorporate those in the budget. The, the model is basically designed to produce the same amount, or roughly the same amount of revenue though, as we have in our, in our budget right now. So put another way, our internal ratemaking process came out very similar to what they proposed, except it's just a different rate structure. So if, if council decides that they want to move forward with the rate study, which would be my recommendation to do that rate study, we need to figure out the methodology on how we revise the budget and then adopt it, and it, and it might be, depending on the timing, I think we can, we can get you some documents back in your, in your possession prior to the budget needing to be adopted, with, and then incorporate the new rate structure and do it that way. Or we could adopt this budget and then amend it right after that, once we get the documents. And my preference would be, if council has a consensus to move forward with that at some point, we can quickly accumulate that information, put it into the budget, but we still have to go back and amend the ordinances and stuff. That's going to take some time to do.
Well, I'm, I'm, I have an advantage over the rest of council because I've already been through two presentations, and I have very, I think I have a, I don't know, a fairly good grasp of what they're, the whole thing is about. There will be, the, the lower users will be seeing a harder hit. Theirs will go up by a greater increase. Larger users will see less. In fact, they could see a decrease in their uses.
Some users will see a decrease.
But the presentation also looked like it moved some of that over into, adjusted more into the sewer.
By the five percent square.
And then my question is, going down, looking out, if Filer Township decides to go with the tribe, what kind of impact is that for the city, and what do we need to do now to adjust for that?
Well, Andy built that in year two into the model.
Okay.
And then he said there's, on current, on the current rates and structure, it's about a sixty-five thousand dollar loss, but the new structure, it's about a hundred thousand dollar loss, but that's been assumed that that's going to happen in year two in the financial model, and, and so we had to account for that because it's very...
That's why the two-year doubling, yeah.
It really is. That's a big piece of it in year two, is the loss of those major sewer customers in Manistee Township. The other thing to point out is the, and there were stakeholders here tonight, listening to the presentation that were here last week from Manistee and I think Manistee Township.
We had both, we had both towns.
I mean, they're, the discussions with them are going to kind of be hinging around this rate study, and, and, you know, that was the main reason, one of the main reasons we did that, so.
Because I know...
There's a lot of moving pieces right now, and it would be nice to get some level of direction because we're going to have to start having some conversations with those towns.
Well, the sewer alone is, for Hapside City, was two hundred and fifty-five percent increase, which is huge.
Well, it's only if you don't compare having to run your own plan.
This is true.
Then it's a pretty good deal. And that, I came up here to make, to make...
And I, and I understand that because it is very expensive to now and build and maintain, as we all know here.
So you can see that we've got thirty-nine million dollars invested, have depreciation in our sewer system right now.
Correct.
And a sewer plant, wastewater treatment plant, as Councilor Cody knows, this is, this is not something you take idly, you take on idly. This is a, this is a long-term commitment. If you build a wastewater treatment plant, this isn't, this isn't a ten-year commitment, this isn't a fifteen-year commitment, this is a long-term commitment that you have made to your community. Today, you'll be, you'll be investing in that plant for all those years moving forward, maintaining the NPV estimate, which gets increasingly challenging every single year. Salary, staff, electricity, chemicals, all of those aspects that's supposed along the wastewater treatment plant. You have to assume all of those changes on a long-term basis if you, if you choose to go down that route. So I think when, and I agree with Jeff's comment, when you look at it from that kind of a significant utility change.
I'm willing to bet that they're, that they're taking those numbers, they're plugging them in, and they're doing a cost analysis on that, and I'm willing to bet that, that those numbers are pretty, pretty favorable. The other thing that this does though, is it creates a user class that is outside the city. It doesn't matter if it's in the Village of Eastlake, Manistee Township, Filer Township, or somebody beyond.
It's house...
It takes away all that, that objectivity of how you negotiate these things because it is based on facts, and it is based on, on national standards. And so we can say, this is what it costs for us to serve you as a customer.
There's a level of equitability here that, that that brings into these conversations, which frankly weren't there before.
Right.
It was, how well, how well could we negotiate, what could we get?
Isn't there a difference in cost, the further you out, it can cost the city more money to service those customers?
It doesn't include any capital costs, and, and the city is always, well, we've had a longstanding policy that if there are capital costs to extend mains to serve you, that those will be borne by the, by the end user.
But there's no pump energy for the pumping cost to get water, sewer from one, from a distance?
The answer is yes, there is that. So for an example, what had been proposed in Filer Township was that Filer Township was going to construct a collection system, and then they were going to contract to the city for maintenance of that system, which included another pump station. When we factor in the rate analysis of what it takes for us to be able to run that system, it, it takes into all those costs, that, those energy costs, those rate...
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure was that...
They were all in heavily...
Yeah, they were thorough.
And it follows right along with, with the mayor's question though, that every, and we've been internally talking, every five years, every five years, you can take those type of scenarios, you can plug those back into the model, and you can make those adjustments so that we stay up with that.
I think one thing, just Jeff took, if we implement the rate study, we will have to budget periodically for that to be updated professionally, and I, and I think that's a good thing because it maintains that level of object, objectivity, and it doesn't cost, that was one of the reasons Burton and Associates was attractive as a consultant, is that their cost to do that was less than the other consultants.
Yes.
But that is something we need to do, not only to, to make sure that internally that we're, we're charging the people, our customers, but to also reassure our partners and the townships that things are being done according to industry standards. And it's, I think it really opens the door to a new chapter of transparency, is what I got.
And the reality is, that was the whole purpose of having a stakeholder meeting. It was to increase the level of trust on how that plan was professionally done. Wasn't Mitch writing that plan, or was it Ed writing that plan? Because we know that the city manager and the finance director are going to try and benefit the city of Manistee. We had an independent third party which used the APW or AWWA standards to present that plan based upon information and data presented, which was presented about our utility system which we provide outside of our city limits. And I, and the whole point of the stakeholder meeting last, the ninth, was to give them that information, and it was slightly different, not much different, let them the opportunity to ask questions, understand the process, go through the process. If you recall, they were also included in the RFP. We gave them copies of the RFP if they wanted changes on the RFP. We obviously, we also provided them all of the, all of the requests or proposals, we had four, if you recall, when we passed that particular thing. So they then provided all of that information from the start, and the whole intent is to build that level of trust between the city of Manistee and the townships, and a little bit about Indianlands of Manistee County, not just the townships, but all of us working together, build that level of trust as we move forward.
How did the other stakeholders order their comments about the presentation? Did they accept it, or what?
We are scheduling meetings with them.
Meetings are being scheduled.
They're, they're absorbing it, they're going back, they're taking the numbers, putting it into their, their forecasts and their models, and then we're going to sit down with both groups in the near future to then talk about what their reactions are.
What, what they, what people think, and their reaction is negative.
Give me, give me, what do you mean by negative?
Well, I mean, they don't want to participate in it, is that, are, well, I guess, if they want the warning, I guess they...
From my perspective, my perspective is, this is a professional rate, unless council says otherwise, and it's council's ultimate decision to make. But from a staff perspective, here's professional service rate that we provided. If I were to say, oh, say it was one hundred and eighteen percent providing water, so let's say you're in Manistee Township, let's say in Manistee Township, we want it for five percent less than that. So what you'd be doing is, is you'd be asking the citizens of Manistee to subsidize that additional rate. I don't see how that flies.
No.
What the rates really do is they make the system whole and affordable and accountable moving forward without the requirement of adding new users.
Yep.
So it puts the city in a position where if we add new users, that's good for the whole system and all the customers, but it doesn't make us dependent on that. The, the biggest thing for me to, that I want to point out is, if you look at the capital improvement projects that are, that are in the proposed budget, and there's a whole bunch of them, and last, last week we talked about, you know, that there's a lot of big number ones, there, there's a lot of required ones, most of them are required. What, what the proposed rate structure does is it builds up some of that funds today, or this year and next year, and it provides a larger baseline so that we can start planning those things out. When you see the sheet in the capital improvement, in the capital improvement program in your budgets, almost every year I've watched those, a lot of those projects slide and slide and slide because there just isn't enough revenue available to do those. This provides a stream of, of money, and I think you heard Andy say that, we need to be putting in about a million, two, every year into the system in order to replace pipes that are broken and cracked or old, and rehab the pump stations when they're, when they're getting old. And so this already starts creating a financing mechanism so we don't have these big, big balls of four million dollars that, that come to us every so often when we have to do a bond issue. This starts allowing us to, to manage the assets like we should.
And that's one of the things that we've talked about for a number of years with council is one of the, one of the issues with the water and sewer utilities that we're not funding our depreciation, and we need to do that, and this model puts us on the line to do that within, with a more bond issue, assuming, you know, all the assumptions are the same. As we move forward and we start to fall off, we'll be able to fund our improvements and our replacements of things with cash, which is what you need to do to survive. You can't continuously go to the capital markets and keep issuing debt, and it's not cost-effective, and all it's looking to be paying.
Well, we had a lot of discussion, we applied for the SAW grant, and the SAW grant identifying all of our asset needs and being able to plan for those, and one of the requirements is that we adjust our rate structure to close that gap. I think this goes a long way towards doing that, and probably takes us beyond what you and the SAW grant requirements would do.
I have one other question on this. We're going to have to incur more bond debt to do everything that's in this year's budget, correct?
Correct.
Was that included in this, okay, in the rate study?
Absolutely.
And in fact, we talked at length about that to make that work, about the timing of the bond, and we're probably going to end up capitalizing one year's worth of interest just to make all the numbers work and make sure we have sufficient cash reserves. We actually talked with our financial advisor, Warren Kramer from RW Baird, to talk through some of those issues.
Because I was wondering how would you know what interest we were going to be issuing in Manistee.
Financial...
Yeah, and the, the first attempt that we made was to not, to try to get away from an eight and a half and an eight and a half back-to-back, but to do something lower in the five to six range and kind of ramp that up. But because those projects are mandated, because they're required by permit, and we have to do those now, we have to be able to finance them now and then pay for them over twenty years. And so that's what creates that, that larger increase in year one and two, and levels it off in the future years.
And if we need it for year three also?
Well, hopefully not, I mean, as the plan shows, that if we follow the plan and the information that is shown, that that drops down to a three and a half. I think one of the more important slides that was presented tonight in that water and sewer rate was the, was the cost of living increase, or the CPI, the water and sewer CPI. There's a perception, many perceptions, and there's perception that our tax rates are the highest in the state of Michigan. You hear that all the time, there's perception that our water and sewer rates are exceedingly high, and that the rate increases that we have been implementing over the last ten years have been really, really high, even though they have been state-mandated projects. This gives you quantifiable data based upon the, the United States as a whole and what is the average utility cost increase over the past fifteen years. And those arguments don't pan out to the reality. The reality is we have been, we have increased our rates less than the water and sewer CPI. It's not called water and sewer CPI.
It is.
It is called water and sewer CPI.
I've had, I've had customers say...
That doesn't mean water increases aren't, aren't painful in many ways. Please don't take it that way. They are for all of us.
I've had customers say, you know, in the past ten years, you raised our rates a hundred percent. And the answer is absolutely.
We should have raised them one fifty.
We should have raised, raised them one twenty to stay at the, at what it costs to keep finding and maintaining the systems.
Trying to find that one.
Interestingly enough, if you go back to ninety-seven through two thousand and one, when the city was doing that large bulk of sewer separation projects, the city happened to be right on that CPI. However, it forecasted out what it would cost to incur the bond debt and, and pay for those projects, and so it's, the city had scheduled out either a three percent or rate of inflation, whichever was higher, for the upcoming years. And what happened is there wasn't a lot of investment beyond that, that debt that it took on, and that's where it started to dip, you know, dip down below it. And as those projects have come back up, we've had to raise the rates up to be able to afford to do the additional projects and funding the additional depreciation. I recall that the depreciation amount is, is right around a million, a million, two. So it's, it's about the same as what we need to be putting back in on capital projects every year.
But you have forty-plus million dollars in investment.
I think it's getting late, and we have two more budget sessions scheduled.
Yeah.
I think we have more information that we need to kind of think over and...
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
And is there any reason why we couldn't move that up to say six, or from seven?
Anybody have a problem with six P M?
I have.
We don't.
I don't know yet, I have to check my work schedule.
By the way, the center.
Leave it at seven then?
Oh.
I don't find it pretty good. I just have to check my work schedule. Good, I got it, I'm fine with it.
That's fine.
Just go. If that's what you...
We adjourned?
We are going to get...